Could I have members of council, please come to the council chambers?
This meeting is now resumed. Okay, before we start, I would just like to acknowledge Counselor Cressy, he would like to make an introduction.
Very briefly, Speaker, I'd like to welcome the loudest group this chamber has ever seen, those are the grade five and six students from Kensington Community School located in Morgue 20. There they are, and if we can make sure we get them on the screen. Kensington is a loud place.
Thank you. And Counselor Cressy, Counselor Cressy, can you bring that piece of paper to the clerk? Members, before the recess, council was debating items, I'll ask 23.1 of PG 24.8 on short-term rentals. Before we return to those items, I will take the release of Member Hope's. Counselor Cressy.
Thank you, Speaker. Item on page 10, MM 35.36, 497, 505 and 511 Richmond Street West, technical amendments to the site-specific bylaw. They're staff technical amendments, if the motion can be put on the screen, I had it advanced circulated and I can release it now.
Yes, we did receive it. So that's on page 10, MM 35.36. On the amendment, on favor, carried, item is amended on fa-- oh, that was the item. Okay. Can you do me a favor? Counselor Fletcher.
Yes, Speaker. On page nine, TE 28.93, 395, 387R and 413 Leslie Street, official plan and zoning bylaw amendment applications request for direction, came without recommendations. City Legal have done some fantastic work and have brought recommendations here, and I would be moving those today.
Okay, so it's on page nine, TE 28.93.
And I'd like a recorded vote on that.
Recorded vote. There are two motions, right, Counselor Fletcher? Okay.
Counselor Mahavik, please.
Counselor Perks, please.
Motion 1A carries unanimously, 29 in favor.
Okay, the second one is on the screen. Did you want a recorded vote on that one, too? Recorded vote.
Counselor DiGiorgio, please. Counselor Lee.
Counselor Campbell, please.
Counselor Pasternak, please, and Counselor Caragianis.
Motion 1B carries unanimously, 31 in favor.
Okay, item is amended, on favor, carry. That was the item.
Here while I'm on my feet, member motion 35.42, that I'd asked to have introduced this morning, had leave to introduce it, and it's available now.
Yes, it was circulated.
It was circulated, including the private paper.
Right, so you would just want to move it?
Yes.
Okay, that's on members' motion 3542, that was circulated before lunch, but that's 915 and 945 Lake Shore Boulevard, on favor. Recorded vote.
Counselor DiGiorgio, please. Counselor Scheiner.
Counselor Holliday, please. Counselor Mahavik, please. Counselor Mamalidi, please.
The item is adopted unanimously, 34 in favor.
Counselor Scheiner.
Madam Speaker, on page 10, MM 35.27, appropriation of property located at the rear of 8 Cumberland Street. I have had staff give me a great explanation of this, and I am prepared to release this.
Okay, that's on page 10, MM 3527, expropriation of property at 8 Cumberland Street. Counselor Scheiner's releasing, on favor, carry. Counselor Fragadakis wants a recorded vote, recorded vote.
Counselor Campbell, please.
The item is adopted unanimously, 35 in favor.
Counselor Caragianis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, this is regarding on page three, PW 24.4. I'm holding it, I'm releasing it, and I know that Counselor Wong Tam might want to hold it, or she might have something to. Page three.
Page three.
Three. One, two, three.
Okay, Counselor Caragianis, please.
You kept asking me, ma'am, and I wanted to tell them what pages it is on.
But why don't you say what the item is, so Counselor Wong Tam would know.
I did. I did. You want me to start all over, Madam Speaker?
Yes, please.
PW 24.4, improving accountability in the utility cost process, page three.
I'm sorry, I couldn't really-- Counselor Robinson would like to hold.
Madam Speaker, on the same page?
Yes.
PW 24.3, utility locate services for business improvement areas--
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I'll try it one more time. For the benefit of Counselor Scheiner--
Who's on first?
This is base number three, page number three, and if I hit a home run, you will slide into the home base. Are we good now? All right. Utility locate services for business improvement areas as required by the--
Okay, we're done, we're done, we're done. You could only use a joke three-- Oh, it looks like it's not a quick item. It's not a quick item, Counselor.
All right, Madam Speaker, I do have another one.
Okay.
On page five, EX 29.31, street events, user fees for business improvement areas.
You're releasing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on page five, EX 29-- Pardon?
Recorded vote.
Okay.
Counselor Fragadakis.
Recorded vote. Yes, on page five, EX 2931, special event user fees for BIA's, recorded vote. I just want to remind members of council that we're going to be back tomorrow, but we have to finish early, so we should kind of release these items.
Counselor Mamalidi, please.
3:30 we have to finish tomorrow.
Counselor Mahavik, please.
So--
Counselor Mamalidi, may we have your vote, please? Counselor Mamalidi, can we have your vote, please? And Counselor Palacio, can we have your vote, too, please?
We're in the middle of a vote, Counselor Palacio. Your light-- Counselor Palacio's lights are not on. I don't know, maybe-- Maybe you just need a bulb, I don't know.
The item is adopted 31 to 5.
Okay, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, page seven. The PW 25.12, curbside management strategy, improving how curbside space is used, I just want to thank staff for their extensive work around this issue, and move that.
Okay, on page seven, PG 25.12, Counselor Robinson is releasing, on favor, recorded vote.
Counselor Wong Tam, please. Counselor Pasternak.
The item is adopted 36 to 1.
Counselor Mahavik. Oh, sorry, another one?
The other one is PW, again, page seven, PW 25.9, next steps for developing a third green bin organics processing facility, and I'd moved a motion on that at committee that a lot of people, I think, were happy about, so I was going to release that and move it.
I'm sorry, what item was that again, sorry?
It's up on the screen, PW 25.9, it's on page seven.
Okay. Counselor Robinson is releasing on page seven, PW 25.9. Yes, okay. Recorded vote.
Counselor Carroll, please.
Well, in a few, in about a half hour--
The item carries unanimously, 36 in favor.
In a half hour, it probably won't be cold anymore. Counselor Robinson?
One more, page seven, PG 24.10, Midtown and Focus Proposals Report, and on behalf of my colleagues Counselor Carmichael Grab and Matlow, I just want to thank staff for their continued support and their focus on infrastructure, green space and public realm in the Young and Eglinton area.
Okay, so that's a-- Well, then it's not a quick release. It's not a quick release if you want to say a few words. Counselor Mahavik.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On page five, EX 29.27, budget impacts of new minimum wage policy and other proposals, bill 148 changes. I'll release it, just noting that, yes, while it does cost us at the city a little bit more money, it is a good thing that we are approaching a livable wage for the employees that we hire that currently are paid well below the amount that is appropriate.
Thank you. On page five, EX 2927, Counselor Mahavik is releasing, recorded vote.
Counselor Lee, please.
The item is adopted 39 to 1.
Counselor Perks.
Thank you, Speaker. I have two items to release, but before I do, I just want to take a quick moment and congratulate our fellow Great Lakes City Detroit, which has just decided to remove its elevated expressway and replace it with a boulevard with bike lanes. The items I wanted to release, Speaker, I'm sorry, I can't find my pages, it's the operating and capital variances.
It's on page, page four.
Page four. In the spirit of holiday giving, I'm going to relieve Mr. Farag of the duty of answering my questions on the operating and capital variances.
So on page, on page four, bottom of the page, EX 29.24, Counselor Perks is releasing, recorded vote.
Counselor Kelly, please. Counselor Carroll. Counselor Bylaw--
That's why they're getting rid of it, David.
Counselor Malow and Counselor Davis, please.
Counselor Mahavik, please.
Counselor Perutzah, please. Counselor Carroll, please. And Counselor Kelly.
The item is adopted unanimously, 40 in favor.
On page five, EX 29.25, you're releasing that one as well, right? Counselor Perks? Counselor Fragadakis?
I was going to ask a procedural question about item 25 before we proceed to a vote. Does the supplementary report that's being moved, can we ask for a separate vote on B versus the whole item?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Perkz reminded me that I have to move the supplementary--
Okay, so now that he's moved that, can I vote on B separate from the whole item?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to request that.
Okay, so we'll vote on EX 29.25B, first, the supplementary report. Okay, on, recorded vote.
Counselor Palacio, please, and Counselor Mahavik, and Counselor Robinson, please.
Counselor Perutzah, please, and Counselor Carmichael Grab.
The supplementary report is adopted 31 to 9.
Okay, on EX 2925, recorded vote? Oh, as amended, yeah.
Counselor Perutzah, Counselor DiGiorgio, please. Counselor Davis and Counselor Lee.
Counselor Mamalidi and Counselor Mahavik, please.
Counselor Lee, please, thank you.
The item is amended, carries 37 to 3.
Counselor Davis. Counselor Davis? Counselor Davis?
Page three. I'm going to try again. ST 14.11, council member appointment to the Toronto and Region Conservation Authority, Regional Watershed Alliance, and I noticed other people have doing this, I'd like to release this to Counselor Lee.
Counselor Palacio would like to hold it.
Oh, well, then I'll keep holding it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Counselor-- No, it's not a quick item. Yes, that's fine, Counselor Carroll. Counselor Davis can give it to Counselor Lee, but it's still being held. Yeah. She said she still wanted to hold it. All right, so can we have the speak-- Can we have the speaker's list back up on the screen, please? We'll continue with the item. Counselor Carroll, you have a question to Counselor Bylaw. Three minutes clarification of the motion.
Well, it really is clarification, Madam Speaker. I just want to understand, because your motion is long, but basically what you're asking is that if someone has a second suite in their home, we would first like them to earn $12,000 on it, using Mr. Gaddin's numbers, we would first like them to earn $12,000 a year, and then if they want to enter into whatever agreement with a tenant to earn more than that, whenever the tenant's on vacation, they can earn that on top of $12,000 a year, at a minimum. That's what your motion is asking them to do with their second suite.
It could be. My motion is simply trying to bring consistency into the bylaw. We agreed that one of the guiding principles was that we were--
was that we were going to allow short-term rental to any owner or renter in their principal residency.
Right.
Principal residency can be a condo unit, a unit in a duplex, a secondary unit. So everybody should be treated the same.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Can I... I'd like... I'm really interested in the question.
Sure, okay.
More interested in the answer.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Fine. Whatever you want.
Excellent.
Okay, come on, let's be civil. Okay.
I agree.
So, Councillor Carroll, allow Councillor Bylaw to answer the question without interruptions.
I did, I'm done.
So, if I can ask my follow-up question now, Madam Speaker. So, you're not, with your motion, asking people who have a second suite to make no money. You're asking them to first make the money that is possible in the housing market. And then, if they want to enter in any arrangement with their tenant, they could also take part in the money that can be earned by the tenant in the sharing market.
Absolutely.
They could earn in both streams if they set up their lease in whatever way they wish. It's not up to us, because we don't manage leases.
Exactly, we don't manage leases. And I think that we should be making as appealing as possible to have it in the long term. That's why I have the other motion as well, to make it easier and more appealing as a city to produce secondary suites as well. But you're absolutely right. We don't manage the relationship between the tenant and the landlord.
Thank you. That sounds like a motion I can support.
Councillor Holiday, question?
Thank you, Speaker. Through you to the member. Motion 2B talks about different policy, regulatory and financial measures that would facilitate the creation of additional secondary suites in Toronto. Does this motion include or exclude laneway housing?
So, laneway housing is going through a separate process. So, at this point, it would not include laneway housing.
Thank you.
Oh, that was fast. Thank you. Councillor Crawford?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Councillor Bylaw, it's a long motion. I'm just going to go right to the last two sentences. A secondary suite can be used as a short-term rental if it is exclusively and separately occupied as a principal residence. So what that means, I'm assuming, if you can answer this, a secondary suite can be used as a short-term rental if you get a tenant first. Is that correct?
Like I said already, we're just... I'm just trying to bring some consistency in this bylaw. We said that the guiding principle was to have any tenant or owner to use their principal residence as a short-term rental. So if you rent a condo downtown, you'll be able to use it. If you rent a unit in a duplex, you'll be able to use it. And if you're a tenant in a secondary unit, you'll be able to use it, with the limitations as the bylaw prescribes for everybody. So everybody will be treated exactly the same way.
So, if you are presently, right now, and there's people in the audience who are renting out their secondary suite on Airbnb, what this is saying is you can no longer do that. You actually have to go out and get a tenant and sign a tenant agreement with them. And then, you can't actually do the Airbnb, but the tenant can. So you've lost an opportunity to rent it out. You don't want to do a tenant. You just want to participate on Airbnb yourself. So you can't do that with your motion.
We just want to bring consistency. It's the same thing that before any changes is the same thing...
Okay, please, keep it down.
It's exactly the same thing you were saying, that condo owner or a duplex or a triplex. You were saying exactly the same thing, Councillor By... Before any changes at PGM...
With respect, Councillor, I was not saying the same thing.
Before the PGM, I showed the picture, and staff believed that what I was showing was actually secondary suites. But the difference between, for example, a duplex, a legal duplex, and two secondary suites is the time that they're built. So physically, they could be exactly the same. And what you're saying is, if we don't pass this, is that if you have a duplex, you won't be able to do it. If you have a secondary unit, you would be able to do it. I just think that we need to stay true to our principle, which is a tenant or an owner should be able to participate in short-term rentals if it is their primary residency. And seventy thousand families call secondary units their primary residency, Councillor.
Thank you, Councillor. And just to finish off, and I agree, but the end of the day, you need to get a tenant before you can participate in that. Thank you.
Again, Councillor, seventy thousand families in our city call secondary units their primary residency. I'm not going to differentiate, tell seventy thousand families that they're different from tenants that live on a duplex or they're different from tenants that live on condos.
Thank you.
We should treat every tenant the same, every owner the same.
Thank you. Councillor Mamalidi, clarification of the motion, three minutes.
So only people that would own their place and call it home would be able to do this?
That's what the regulations say, yes.
So, under our bylaw, if somebody owned six condos and five of them they weren't living in and wanted to rent them out, would they be allowed to do that?
If they wanted to rent them out on short-term rentals?
Long-term, short-term?
Well, it's different. If you own six condos, the one that you live in, you can participate in short-term rental.
Right, my question is...
The other five, you can rent them on long-term. That's what the recommendations the staff have, yes.
Does the recommendation allow that same owner for those five to use Airbnb?
No.
Why?
Because we are agreeing that one's of the principle is that it should be somebody's primary residency.
But that person who has a primary resident who's investing in this city and is spending their money and buying and paying taxes and doing all the things that are necessary, why shouldn't they be allowed to do what they want with the properties they own?
Okay. Please, no applause.
That's okay, you can keep going.
Councillor, as you know, we have...
No, no, Councillor Mamalidi, that's not okay.
We have different policies and zoning in our cities. There's a reason, for example, that, you know, in your house, it's not allowed to... In your area, it's not allowed... Rooming houses are not allowed. Why shouldn't homeowners be able to allow a rooming house? Why shouldn't homeowners be able to have grow-ups in their basement apartments? Why shouldn't we have lawyer's offices or body shops in the middle of our residential streets?
Councillor, Councillor Bylaw, please, just answer... Councillor Bylaw? Just answer the question.
I am answering the question. This is the reason why.
No, my point is this.
This is the reason why. And the reason why is because of your hot plan that you claimed that you wrote over and over and over again, Councillor. You say you wrote that hot plan. We're trying to implement it.
Councillor Cramble, please. I can't... Cramble, I said Cramble. Okay, please, let's not get into a debate here. Okay, Councillor Mamalidi, question?
Well, perhaps the side shows can finish, and I can try to... I could try to...
But it's clarification of the motion, Councillor Mamalidi.
Trying. It's my belief that this motion restricts... It's my belief that...
Please, Councillor Carroll. Okay, Councillor Carroll, please.
I would say a minute has gone by.
Okay, Councillor Mamalidi.
Are you going to stop it, or no?
Okay, Councillor Mamalidi, go ahead, ask your question.
It's my belief that your motion, what it actually does in retrospect with... Is not allow homeowners to do particular things. And I'd like to know whether or not you're prepared to change that so that we can have some unanimity on council for a change and allow for people that own properties to be able to rent to whoever they want for whatever they want and not try to force them into something that is just going to create chaos.
That was your last question. Okay, Councillor.
Councillor, I believe that staff was right when they created the principles that guided this policy. I just think we needed to bring consistency. And the principles say that you can own or an owner or a renter can participate in short-term rental if it's their primary residency and that this policy should not have an impact on the availability and affordability of housing in our city.
Okay, thank you.
In order to do that, I believe that we need this.
Thank you. Councillor De Giorgio, clarification of the motion.
Very quickly, Madam Speaker. Councillor Bylaw, in motion 2B, I just want clarification on the last part of the motion that says including policy, regulatory, and financial measures that could provide incentives to facilitate the creation of additional secondary suites in Toronto. Are you referring to incentives to permit the unlicensed, let's say, basement apartments to become licensed basement apartments?
I think that could be included. But I'm going to give you an example. I have, the other day in my area, a resident that wanted to build two secondary units. And the development charges for the... She's renovating her house, so it becomes with three apartments. The development charges and park levies and all that was $100,000. For a homeowner to pay $100,000, it costs a lot of money. And it's a bureaucratic process that we have in our city that with the shortage of rental that we have, this is something that we could help a little bit more to facilitate. We could do a better job of facilitating and helping homeowners through this process and through these fees to allow for the secondary suites that for decades, for decades, has been part of our housing stock. It is one-fifth of our rental housing stock. And we should be looking at this as a form of housing in our city like we've been doing it for decades.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Pasternak, clarification of the motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. When I was listening to Councillor Crawford's questions, there seemed to be confusion over the scenario that was created, that he seemed to be running through a scenario in which someone who buys a house in order to be on the Airbnb or short-term rental platform had to first get a tenant and then work out some deal with them to do it. That's not my understanding, that someone who buys a house who has a secondary suite, which we commonly call, in North York, basement apartments, can put that basement apartment on the platform. Is that correct?
No, the homeowner would not be able to put it directly on the platform.
Even if it's a principal residence and its owner occupied?
The principal resident is their... Unit is their principal resident. The secondary unit is not their principal residency.
So if the house is, under Revenue Canada rules and federal statute, the principal residence and its owner occupied, under your motion, you cannot then put the basement or some kind of other room in the house on the...
No, no. You can. You can put up to three in sitting bedrooms. You can put up your house up to 180 days, the whole house. You can participate. Absolutely, you can. But it's... So, for example, city staff had told us that they were going to also limit only one secondary unit. So if you had two secondary units, you wouldn't be able to do it. It's only one secondary unit. The rationale is the same. A secondary unit is a secondary unit. What we're trying to bring in here again is consistency, is to treat a tenant as a tenant. Secondary unit is the primary residency of 70,000 families in our city. It is one-fifth of our rental stock. We should treat tenants in that secondary unit the same way they were treating tenants in a condo unit or you're treating tenants in a duplex or triplex. And the homeowner is the same way. That's all. We're trying to bring some consistency in the policy.
So, just to summarize, someone who is the owner of a fully detached or semi-property, sole owner, owner occupied, extra bedroom, that can go on the platform.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Burnside, clarification?
Yeah, thank you. So, just to understand, if I have a home... Own a home and have a secondary suite, obviously, under this, it must remain that way. I can't go Airbnb, correct? Okay. If I have a tenant, so I have a secondary suite, and I now have a tenant, that tenant can go Airbnb?
If you allow it, it's your relationship with your tenant.
Does that really make sense, though?
Does it? You own a condo, so let me ask this.
Sorry.
So let me ask this. You...
Hold on, Councillor Bylaw, please. Let me put your time... Please, I'm asking the audience to please not applause. Please. Or I'm going to have to ask you to leave. So please? Thank you.
So what staff had recommended is if you rent a condo from you, you own two condos, but one is on long-term rental...
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
One is on long-term rental, you would be able to participate. That's what staff were recommending.
Okay.
If you lived, if you were a tenant in a duplex or triplex, you'd be able to participate. So all we're doing here is just, again, create consistency. Secondary units are the principal residency of 70,000 families in the city.
No, I understand that, but you don't...
So we're just bringing consistency to the tenant's side...
I understand that, but that's not what I'm...
And to the owner's side.
I'm just trying to understand the... I'm not trying to understand the consistency part. I'm trying to understand the logistics of it. So... But in this case, would the renter of that secondary suite, in effect, not have more rights than the owner? Or the same rights?
No, no. The owner can also rent rooms in his house. The renter can also, if he's going away, he can rent his unit in up to 180 days. He can do all that in his unit. Same rights. It's the same right. It's what the principle is. The principle is any owner or renter can participate as part of the short-term rental if it is their primary residency.
So as long as I get someone to rent my secondary suite, that secondary suite can be rented.
Or your condo. If you own two condos...
I'm kind of...
No, 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 but I'm just saying that we should be treating renters. It doesn't matter if you're renting a condo or renting a secondary suite. They should be treated in the city the same way. And if you own a condo, we were telling you that your tenant could do it, but you couldn't. We're just saying the same thing in here, that's all.
Thank you. Councillor Shiner, clarification?
So, Councillor Bylaw, you're saying it's the same thing. But currently, if I have a house... If I own a house and I wish to rent out the second suite, I put it up for rent, I interview the people that are there, and I decide who I would like to live in my house with me. Under your scenario now, once I pick that person, if they decide, they can, on an ongoing basis for 180 days, rent out my house to someone that I have no idea who it is and no control over that. Is that not right?
No, you can put on your lease that you don't allow that.
Can you stop sublets through the Rental Tenancy Act? Because I don't believe common law allows you. You must...
It's not a sublet.
You are permitted under common law...
But this is not a sublet.
You're still permitted it. You end up with issues at the rent tribunal now, will you not, as to who has control over that suite?
So how is that different from the condo units that we're allowing in here or the duplex and triplex?
Is that not... Because it's a question...
I own a condo.
Substantially different because I'm not living in half of that condo unit or upstairs. This is my house where I'm living. And under your suggestion, you're giving my tenant control of half of my house. That is totally different, is it not, than a condo anywhere I'm not living? Because I've experienced living in a home with a tenant who's taken advantage of the landlord.
Councillor Shiner, please just ask the question on clarification.
I'm trying to, because my colleague is saying it's the same. And I'm asking, how is it the same when I'm actually sharing that premises, which I'm not doing if I'm renting out or my tenant's renting out the condo?
Or the duplex or the triplex.
Yes. So is it not different?
The legislation allowed the duplex and the triplex. Again, is the same thing as a secondary unit. You're living above that or below that?
But it's not the same as a condo.
But is this... But you are allowing it in the duplex and triplex.
Councillor Bylaw, okay.
But am I not giving control, then, of the unit in my home...
I don't believe so.
To my tenant?
Okay, thank you.
I am not finished, Madam Speaker.
Okay, clarification, please.
Yeah, there's two motions here.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, but my colleague now is answering my questions for me. And I didn't ask you about clarification of your motion, in due respect. No, I'm asking questions. I'm trying to understand your second motion. And I don't understand the $100,000 worth of charges when you said a second secondary suite. There can only be one second.
No, you can ask staff. No, you can ask staff. You can have, you can have a couple of secondary suites in your property. You can confirm that with planning staff, sir.
So you're trying to say that we should help people that have a home and have one secondary suite have more than one secondary suite?
No.
By giving them financial benefits?
No.
Well, you said this was financial benefits.
I, I am saying that we should look at ways to make it easier for people to have secondary suites.
Okay, that...
And look at a array of opportunities.
Counselor Bylaw, Counselor Bylaw, that was the last question, please.
Where's my last question?
Because you only have three minutes. Counselor Fletcher, three minutes, clarification of the motion.
I just want to be clear. You're aligning all of the policies. That's your intent, number one. Number two, with a secondary suite, you would generally have a lease with a tenant.
Yep.
And they could sublet, that could be in their lease, that could be their right. You could put in their lease that they're not allowed to have Airbnb.
Yep.
Or you could put in their lease that they are under certain conditions. Am I correct?
Yep.
Yes. And so with that, that is simply, the tenant actually has a fair amount of control, once you have a lease. Would you agree with me?
Yep.
In your home, once you've leased that, that's their place, not you're there, it's their spot under the lease. Would you think, I think that's right?
It's their primary residence.
It's their primary residence. So that's just how that works. It's your house, your suite, once you lease that to a tenant, it's their suite and their primary residence, which they could or could not put up on Airbnb for the 180 days, should you allow it in the lease. Would I be correct in interpreting that?
Yep.
But what it would mean, there, somebody could not rent 10 basement apartments and then put 10 apartments up as Airbnb, because that wouldn't be their primary residence.
Yep.
So you're very clear, it has to follow the same primary residence rules as it were establishing for the duplex and the condo, et cetera, right?
Yep, absolutely.
So it's a level playing field for everybody, all of the tenants who happen to be on a lease with an owner, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Perks, three minutes, clarification of the motion?
Thank you very much, Speaker. So there have been a number of questions about what's different in your proposal from simply opening them up, and there were some aspects of that that I wanted to make sure I understood. So if I rent out a secondary suite, my basement, separate entrance, the whole thing, that person is now protected under all the terms that protect the tenant in the Rental Tenancies Act.
All the rights and all the obligations.
So, for example, the unit is rent-controlled.
All the rights and all the obligations.
So they, that tenant would also have to have that as their principal address, so they couldn't just be sort of a vacant or an absent tenant and then put it out on Airbnb all the time. They would have to have that as their principal residence.
Absolutely.
So the scenario isn't that someone goes and gets a tenant and the tenant, uses a tenant sort of as a beard or a fake way of getting around the rules to have that be an Airbnb rule, because rental, because it still has to be their principal residence, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So what would, how this would probably happen is I rent out my basement, separate entrance, fire code, all of that, I have a tenant down there, they decide they're going to go visit their parents in another country for a month, and they arrange to have that unit on Airbnb during that time. That would be an example of how it would work.
If your lease allowed for that?
If your lease permits it.
Yep.
Okay, so it is actually not creating the kind of scenario that Counselor Burnside or Shiner was asking you about, but it all sounds much more straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mamalidi to speak.
Well, I can recall a part of history where, where there were decisions made like this, and eventually every single owner of every single home that ended up buying it with the rules played that government gave them, ended up getting kicked out for basically the same reasons, and it was Fidel Castro kicked everybody out. And I think that there's no, there should be logic in comparing what you're trying to do here with what he did in Cuba. And I will say that because that's, you're forcing homeowners to abide by bylaws that don't make sense to them after they buy a home and after they decide that they need to do it, or are forced into a situation where they need to do it, like our seniors in this city, who can't afford the taxes that we keep bumping up, and can't afford the fees, the garbage fees and everything else, and want to introduce roof taxes and every other tax under the sun. They're trying to make things work, and they can't afford it on a pension. And so now you're saying to them, you can do this, but you can't do that. You can hire one of our tenants, and we'll even tell you who that is, and everything will be, and you'll get a check if you really want it, we'll do that for you. But it has to be long-term, it has to be under our terms, or you're not getting anything. And if you want to use Airbnb and you want to make a dollar here and there on your own and not use supplemented government money, you're telling them they're not allowed to do it. All this is so confusing, it reminds me of the taxi debate. It reminds me of everything that we've done around taxi and Uber and everything else. Every time it's going to come to the floor, counsel, we're not going to understand it. And God forbid, Tracy, your particular department, you're not going to understand any of this stuff after we vote today, none of it. And I could just see the discussions that take place at the door when your inspectors go to the door and say, hello, we got a complaint, we think that there's more than one family in here. Are you a renter? Oh, yes, I am. Is the owner home? No, the owner's not home. Oh, if the owner's not home, then how could you be a renter? And who rented the unit of the unit? Is it, is it a tenant that rented the unit? Yes, it happens to be a tenant that rented me the unit. Who's making all the noise outside? Well, it's not the owner, and if it was the owner, we'd be able to find him. It's the tenant, and you still can't find the tenant, because it's got to be the owner that has to be fined.
You owe for yours.
You are confusing everything to everybody, and at the end of the day, homeowners are going to end up renting their home to whoever they want anyway, and you're not going to be able to enforce it. So why don't you just do what Airbnb is asking you to do? It is, it is already set in place. They've got regulations, regulate them the way you want, let homeowners do whatever they want. You want to force homeowners to put in tenants that may not pay the rent and may take that government subsidy and buy something else with it? You're forcing them to do that, and that's wrong. Homeowners should not be forced to do anything on the homes that they paid for and sweat for all these years. My, my parents are a prime example of things that have happened over the years. When I was growing up, and I gave you one story earlier, I'll give you another one. Immigrant family, barely spoke English, came and finally bought their first house. And in that first house, they recognized that it was hard for them to pay the mortgage. And I was maybe four, five, six years old, when I saw my father make sure that there was a divided entrance and made sure that there was a comfortable place that he can rent to help pay the mortgage. And every two weeks, or so, I remember my father sitting down, not knowing what to do, because one of the neighbors would call the inspectors on him and my mother for trying to pay the mortgage and bring their family up the way they should. And back then, it had to be hidden. It was different than today. But he made the decision, because he had to, and he made the decision to bring up his family. If he wanted to rent it to one person or another, he was, he felt he needed to do it, and he didn't want government coming and stepping on his feet and his toes and telling him what to do with his own house. We in this place have continually told homeowners, especially this term of office, what to do in their, in their own home. Trees, can't cut them down. You can't even, you can't even look at somebody the wrong way if you own a home without getting yourself into trouble in this city. It's time to leave homeowners alone, and it's time to let them make the decisions that they want. You're not anybody's parent, but to...
Thank you, Counselor Mamalidi, your time's up. Thank you. Counselor Crawford to speak?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have a motion on PG 24.8. It's the, so I'm going to replace the motion or the motions that are presently before us, and I'm going back to the staff recommendations that came out of, well, out of the committee. And that is, and I'll speak to it a little bit in a second, that is to allow secondary suites in permanent residence for home sharing. These are the staff recommendations that Ms. Cook was talking about. As a council, we always try to find a balance in what we are doing, and that's the challenge. Sometimes we get there, sometimes we don't, but I'm confident that the, and Tracy, the director of MLS, said the same thing. They tried to find the balance, and the balance was the recommendations they brought us. So that's what I'm going back to, and I think there is a balance. This debate is about affordability, the ability of thousands of homeowners all across this city who are struggling to afford their one main investment, which is their home. I have two of my residents in, with us today, Paul and Lena. They're like hundreds of homeowners all across the city. They work hard their entire life to afford their home. Through unforeseen circumstances, they lose their jobs, they don't have the ability to afford the house that they've worked so hard. They put in a basement apartment or a secondary suite. They rented it out initially as tenants. They found problems with that, they had concerns, they had difficulties with that. When Airbnb came onboard this new platform, they decided to try it. They actually liked the fact that they could have people from all around the world coming and visiting with them and getting to know them, and they thought this was great. They made some extra money. That money that they make, and by the way, they have no pensions, they have no ability other than home sharing right now to look at their future, and they, they need that. This is an opportunity, when Airbnb came, to afford their house long-term. Homeowners deserve some flexibility with their major investments, and home sharing is an important house affordability strategy for Toronto families across this city. If we remove the secondary suites or the ability of the homeowners to have the secondary suites as short-term rentals, we're not going to change the overall impact. You're not going to be finding people going from short-term rentals if we can't do it and going into the long-term rentals. It's not going to be happening. People prefer short-term rentals for many different reasons. Yeah, they can make a bit more money, but there's a lot of work involved, daily and weekly work involved in that. They enjoy, as I said, they enjoy meeting people from around the world and interacting, and there's demand for short-term rentals. But as it says in the supplementary report, zoning bylaws regulate land uses and cannot distinguish between the users of the building. It is at the owner's discretion how they use a secondary suite. That's critically important, because if we go with where Counselor Balaou is going, they will not have that discretion at all. They will have to go out and get a tenant to have the discretion to go on Airbnb. That is the big difference between what I have moved with the staff recommendations and with what Counselor Balaou is moving. We want the balance, we want the control, but we need to have the ability for these homeowners to be able to make the decisions that they want within their house, within the primary residence. I agree in the staff recommendations about a primary residence, that we have to put restrictions around that. You can't have two buildings, you can't have two homes and rent them out at the same time. It's the primary residence. But what we are wanting to do is that box within the box, is they have that ability to control that box, which is a secondary unit. They have and they should have that ability. The big difference between, and this is very clear, between what I'm trying to move and what Counselor Balaou is trying to move, and she sort of answered that, but she got off on what it's all about. I am a homeowner. I have a house, I have a box within a box, which is a secondary suite in there. It's a basement apartment. I want to participate in Airbnb. Counselor Balaou's motion will say, sorry, you can't do that, you have to go get a long-term tenant or a tenant, and then that tenant can rent it out on Airbnb. And yeah, you can make an agreement through the lease, but you do not have the ability yourself. You don't want to, you do not want to be, have a tenant. On Counselor Balaou's scenario, you're out of luck. You can't participate in Airbnb. My motion, staff recommendations, will allow you to go out and use Airbnb or a sharing platform. That's the difference. I will not be supporting Counselor Balaou's motion, I please, and I do hope you support mine. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have questions for you. Counselor Carroll, three minutes, clarification?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Counselor Crawford, I have, I have sympathy for, for the residents that you have here in the audience today. I have a similar resident in Ward 33 who owns a small home up on Pleasantview Boulevard. His additional source of income is a two-bedroom condo in the crossroads nearby. He's a caretaker of a school by trade, and so is retired now, but he has a condo nearby, and he rents that out to a tenant. He's not allowed to evict the tenant and just, and just Airbnb, short-term rental.
Counselor Carroll, your question, please.
So, I'm getting there, Madam Speaker, about as fast as everyone else got there earlier. And so my question is, how is my resident fairly addressed the same way you want your resident addressed in the staff recommendations you're putting back on the table? They both need this revenue, but it sounds like one of them gets to make it and the other doesn't. Is, am I reading your motion right?
Counselor, is, as you mentioned, I think, two condos, I didn't get all of it.
No, one, one. I was interrupted. He has one condo to make money with.
You have one condo, and you have a, it's two-bedroom, you have one bedroom in there that you want to rent out. Is that what you're saying?
He can't. He lives in a house. He doesn't rent out his basement. He bought a little condo, and that's his nest egg. He's rented it to a tenant, but he can't, under the staff recommendations, as I remember them, maybe you remember them better because you're moving them. That's why I'm asking you for clarification. He can't evict that tenant and rent it out his Airbnb 365 days a year. If we go back to your recommendations, someone who rents his basement can, and someone whose nest egg is in a little condo three blocks down the road can't. Is that fair?
Counsel, I'm trying to clarify. You have a condo, and the condo is a separate unit, you have two bedrooms in that condo. You, I assume, and is that your, is that your resident's primary residence?
No.
Okay, so there's the difference, exactly. So part of the recommendations, what you're, aside from the secondary, what we're doing, and this has nothing necessarily to do with Counselor Balaou's motion and mine, the other recommendation is, is you can only rent out a primary residence on platform. So that is, that's where your, the issue with your residence lies. It doesn't lie in the difference between what Counselor Balaou and I are doing, because it's part of the other context of, if it's not a primary residence, he has a primary residence, but he has another unit, which would be the condo.
Just to clarify, we heard, we heard staff tell us that a secondary suite walks like a duck, tucks like a duck, has a kitchen and a door, is a primary residence.
That was your last question.
Not if they have two, you can't have two primary residences, Counselor.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Counselor Davis?
Counselor Crawford, you heard this morning that there are 181,000 people waiting for housing, subsidized housing, the rent subsidies, and the direction of the federal government as well is to provide rent supplements, and the provincial direction is to encourage second suites as a form of affordable housing. How does your motion contribute to achieving our housing policy as well as the provincial housing policy?
What my motion does is go back to the staff recommendations, which gives the homeowners the discretion and the opportunity to utilize home sharing or Airbnb. That's what that does.
But not permanent housing. You've made that point, that it would not be permanent housing. So how does it contribute to achieving the city's objective of providing more affordable housing for low-income or middle-income families in the city of Toronto? That is also a public policy objective of our city.
And I would also say that affordability and the opportunity for people in this city to afford their houses is also an important direction that we need to go as a city. And what we may be doing, let me finish the question. What we may be doing, if we go along with Counselor Balaou, is not allowing these people, these individuals who need the money to afford their house, we're going to tell them, you cannot rent out your basement apartment.
And how is it preventing them from making money if they had permanent tenants who were offered housing that is so desperately needed in the city of Toronto? How is it that they wouldn't make money doing that?
Okay, Counselor Davis, just clarification of the motion, please.
I asked.
Not the time to debate.
How is it contributing, his motion, contributing to supporting the city of Toronto's housing policy?
Well, I'll tell you, Counselor Davis, because if we go with my motion, the staff recommendations, everyone across the city will have the opportunity, still have the opportunity to rent out their basement apartments, they, their, whatever they're called, long-term. They will have that choice to do that as they do now. They have had the choice over the last six months to two years with Airbnb. There are some that have decided to go with Airbnb. The vast majority of them haven't. Why? Probably because Airbnb and home sharing takes a bit of work and management, the day-to-day, the week-to-week, and some people just don't want to do that. We should not be forcing them to have to go to long-term rental because of that.
So do you think that tourists should have greater access to what affordable housing we have in Toronto than the residents who live here?
Counselor, I don't...
Do you really think that?
I don't think it's about, I do not, I do not think it's about comparing tourists.
Okay, we're getting into a debate, Counsel, thank you, that's it. We're getting into a debate now. We're not asking questions, we're debating. So if you want to ask a question... So if you want to ask a question, ask a question, but not debate. And councillor Crawford, please, just answer the questions. Councillor Mamle, a question.
I've got questions, Speaker. And I've got questions of this particular councillor with this particular motion, and I'd like to know whether or not your motion sets a real tone that allows a homeowner to basically do what they want to do with their house.
Yes, they do. Now, within, with, understanding within context, councillor, because a part of the other direction that I think we all agree on is it's about their permanent residence. So if another homeowner has a second, third house, they can't put it on Airbnb, and I think I recognize that. It's about this permanent residence with a secondary suite. Yes, they have the flexibility.
Okay. But what it does is it says to a homeowner, I've got a choice here, right? I think this is what it says.
Yep.
I've got a choice here. I could do what, what many of the politicians seems to want me to do, and that's to rent out long-term to a tenant that I may or may not like, okay? Or I could choose a tenant of my own and a company of my own and with my own terms.
Yep, exactly.
It gives them that choice, right?
Yeah, it's all about choice.
All right. Now, councillor Bala's motion, and it's different than yours, gives the other message to the homeowner. It basically says, I got to do it this way or no way.
Yeah, pretty much. You have to actually go out and get a tenant, a tenant, long-term, agree, well, one year anyway. You have to do a lease of a tenant for one year to be able to rent out your apartment for Airbnb.
All right, let's take that tenant for a second, then. We force the homeowner to choose that tenant, and that tenant decides that they're not going to pay the rent for five months. What happens?
Well, it's going to be a bit of a problem because you have the Landlord and Tenant Act that they have to deal with.
So what happens in the case of Airbnb where a homeowner decides, I'm going to make a little extra profit, help me pay and supplement my pension so that I can pay the costs of my house? How's that paid?
Well, listen, they have the opportunity that if they don't want to rent out their property for a week, a month, two days, whatever, they can say no to that. They can say no to, they decide who's going to be coming in, and they could come in for two, three, four days, and then they move on. So they have the flexibility and the opportunity to decide who they want.
Earlier from our staff, we heard that if, if there are any problems with any tenancies, it is the homeowner that ends up having to bear the blunt of the punishment, basically, right?
Pretty much.
So if that tenant causes a problem in the basement, decides not to pay the rent, blasts music, interferes with everybody's everyday life on the street, who ends up having to deal with that in a legal manner with the, with the behavior of that tenant?
Well, it's the homeowner that's going to have to deal with that over a long period of time to figure out how they can evict them.
So there is a clear difference between what you're trying to propose here and what, and what councillor Bala and some of the other left-leaning councillors are trying to do here.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, councillor, I think there's a certain balance here. There's a give and take, and the whole process that we went through was a bit of give and take, but I think the balance that staff brought to us was the proper kind of balance to figure out.
Thank you. We're getting into debates. It seems like members of council have forgotten how to ask questions. Three minutes for clarification of the motion, not to debate, not to speak, and we're losing that, and I don't know what's happening today. But please, if you have a question, just ask your question only and not debate. Councillor De Giorgio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, councillor, councillor Crawford, I am supportive of your motion because I think there's a fundamental problem related to zoning when it comes to trying to establish...
And what is your question?
My question is, are you aware, are you aware that you're not allowed to have two principal residences in a single-family home area? In other words, you can't have two separate dwellings in a single-family zone.
Well, as I understand, you've got, I mean, a permanent residence is just one.
Right.
You're only allowed to have, to use the home sharing platform regulations, you have to have one, you can only use one.
There can only be one principal residence.
Only one.
In a single-family home, which is, I think, a fundamental problem with respect to trying to decipher the two different motions. My second question is this. Does your motion, does your motion permit the existence of the unlicensed basement apartments?
As I understand from staff, there is, and this is citywide, there, we do have the, the secondary suites, which are technically not the same, but very same as a basement apartment in Scarborough in North York. They are very similar, yes. We need to figure out the distinction of legal and not legal, and I think councillor Bala's motion or second motion potentially could look at it. That's, that's another different difficulty we need to deal with, but they're in essence the same.
Yeah, and her, the essence of her motion was to try and introduce some financial incentive for people who have basement apartments to actually legalize them, i.e. bring them up to standards. That's all it means. If you choose to license them, that means you have to basically provide standard.
Yeah, and I mean, that's an important issue. I think it's separate from, from the issue that we're, the difference between what councillor Bala and I are talking about.
Thank you.
Councillor Bala, questions?
Just a couple of quick questions, because I hear you over and over again saying, there's a box, and inside that box, you should be able to do whatever you want.
No, no, with, no, not any, with the staff recommendations, the new direction we're looking at going in the staff recommendations.
So what's the difference between having three bedrooms or four bedrooms for rent? Or one secondary unit versus two? So there's people in this city that have two secondary units. Why are you limiting them only to one?
Okay, so the difference, councillor, and let me, the box within a box, so the box within a box, which is the secondary suite, has two things that a regular wouldn't have. You have washing facilities and you have a kitchen. So that's the box within a box.
But there's boxes that have two boxes, that have two secondary suites. So why are you limiting it to one? If you, if your, if your rationale is that inside that box, you should do whatever, the staff recommendations limit secondary suites to one.
Yes. So, and again...
And under your rationale, if they have two, they should have the two.
No, I'm going back to specifically what staff recommendations are, which you said would be the one secondary unit.
But isn't that going against your rationale?
I think, again, understood, councillor, I do believe that, and, you know, the director said that, they were trying to figure out a balance. They're trying to figure out a middle ground, and, and I think that's what they tried to do. Yes, we can argue that, well, why, and I think that was going through the process, why not two secondary suites? I think they fell on, it makes sense to have the one secondary, because I think the majority of houses in the city would have been the one secondary.
But with your argument, you do understand that that tenant on that secondary, the second secondary suite is going to be able to do everything that you don't want them to do? You understand? Your landlord, and in that box, there's two secondary suites, you'll be able to put one on Airbnb, and the other one you rent on long-term rental, that tenant is going to be doing everything that you said you were so much against it. Your motion does not solve that.
Thank you.
Councillor Pasternak, clarification of the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I guess the backstory to today's discussion is what can this governing body do about our rental stock and our, and our affordable rental crisis? Now, as I understand it, the secondary suites that would be, I guess, put on a platform, the Airbnb platform or a similar rental platform, would be charged at the going nightly rates that these platforms set. It's, they're private industry and they set these rates. I'm trying to understand, and I've looked at a number of the nightly rates, on how having a secondary suite, or I guess it would be the third, technically the third party living in this box, could consider that affordable housing, when I've seen many of the units for, I don't know, $75, $100 a night, $125 a night.
Yeah, well, I mean, there is, there's a variety out in my area. I think they're going for about $55, $60, $80 for a secondary suite. There's a difference between renting out an entire house, understandably, but when you're just dealing with a secondary suite, there is a variety all across the city. In my area, tends to be around that $60 to $70 per night to rent out a secondary suite.
I'm trying to think if we're, if the backstory to what we're discussing here is to provide more rental stock and affordable rental stock. I fail to see how the Airbnb price regime provides that. And I'm, and I'm more looking for clarity on what's really going on, on the floor here. I don't, I don't see that platform as solving the affordability of the rental stock in this city.
Listen, I, do I think they have the opportunity, and we were discussing that a couple of days ago, about going back and looking at, when we were dealing with the shelter issue yesterday, is to go back and to look at that opportunity for the Airbnbs in the city. To comment, we're spending $100, over $100 a night just for a motel to deal with the shelter issue, then why shouldn't we be looking at other platforms? I think staff will be looking at that opportunity. Is there a way to deal with the housing crisis that we have, looking at home sharing? And that, I think, is something that does need to come back.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm looking at the discussion back and forth and, and looking at some of the questions to both the competing motions, and I come back to that issue. At $100 a night, you're looking at a rental of maybe a room for $3,000 a month. I fail to see how that will enhance or improve our affordable rental shortage and increase rental stock. I don't know, maybe, maybe...
That was your last question.
Councillor, listen, I agree, and I think that, I mean, understanding what my motion does between councillor Bala's, and I've said it a few times, and there's a bigger discussion here, but really, alls I'm saying is that you have a secondary unit, you have the opportunity to be able to rent it out on a home sharing platform yourself. That gives the homeowner the ability to be able to do that. That's simply what I'm trying to do.
Thank you. Councillor Crisanti, clarification of the motion, question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. So, very quickly, councillor Crawford, so the report speaks to the, the proposal would allow for both tenants and owners to operate short-term rentals. Councillor Bala's motion speaks to a similar, a similar thing where they can allow short-term rentals in a secondary suite. And I believe you verbally also stated that secondary suites should be available for short-term rentals. It's not written here. So I'm, what's the difference, then, between what you're asking and what councillor Bala is asking and what's, and what's in the report?
So, again, what is in the initial report, and that's what I've moved, so it's not my motion, I'm just moving the staff recommendations.
Right, and I see that.
Which is that. So what the staff recommendations say is you are in, you have a permanent residence. You have a house that has a secondary unit, which is a basement apartment, which means you have, number one, you have a kitchen, you have a toilet, and you have a separate entrance. So it's separated, it's a box within a box. So what staff have said is you are allowed, in their recommendations, to actually go out and rent that on a, on Airbnb, on a home sharing platform. You're allowed to do that. You're allowed to manage that yourself on a day-to-day, week-to-week, because it's your primary residence and not your second or third. And part of the recommendations are a maximum, I think, 180 days a year. So there are other restrictions on that. Where councillor Bala's is different is what it says is that you, with a primary residence with, with a secondary suite, you need, and that you need to go rent that secondary suite to a tenant. You need to get a lease of a tenant before, and you actually can't rent it out on Airbnb, but the tenant can rent it out on Airbnb. That is the difference, the very, it's a very simple difference between the two of them. That is the difference.
All right, so you're supporting staff recommendations?
Supporting staff, initial staff recommendations.
Regulated, then? Councillor Layton?
Boxes within boxes here. This is, this conversation about boxes is actually rather confusing. So I'm going to try to ask a question, because I'm trying to distinguish what the difference is between what you're proposing and what staff have actually rejected, which is this notion that someone can only rent out their primary residence and not another property. So I believe I understand where your motion's coming from, but the logic that you're using to, to, to follow it or to move it forward is that because the property owner of the secondary suite should be able to do what they want with that property, correct?
Well, within reasons. I mean, you mean, you have, I mean, you can rent it out on Airbnb.
Sure, you can run a metal workshop.
You can do it on, you have 180, on the share, home, we're talking about home sharing. So on the home sharing platform, maximum 180 days a year. But you have the discretion and the ability to do what you want.
But then what's the difference between someone who owns a home and then owns an investment property? What's the difference between them not being able to, like a condominium, a box beside a box, two separate boxes, but they own both boxes? There's not one inside the other, it's outside the other. So once a box becomes outside of the box, they deserve all, they deserve to lose those rights that you're talking about?
Here's, here's the difference. So part of the homes, the recommendations from staff is you own two or three, you own two properties. You can only, on home sharing, you can only put one, which is your permanent residence, onto the home sharing platform. You are not allowed to put this, the sec, the other investment property you mentioned, you not being able to utilize that on home sharing. That is the difference between the two. The box...
Let's separate out this language on properties and call them units. So you own two units. In one scenario, it's one unit adjacent another unit, a basement unit, and in another scenario, it's two units. But you're saying one, at one point in time, it's okay, but it's not okay in the other scenario. I'm just trying to clarify. You still don't, you still don't believe that someone should be able to rent out a suite that's a box outside of their box?
Well, the recommendations are, no, as part of home sharing, you are not allowed to do that.
But I want to know why you're putting forward this motion, but you're not going further to say, staff, we're wrong about the, about this, we're wrong about the, we're right about the secondary unit, the box within a box, but wrong about allowing people to, to rent out all units that they, that they own, whether or not they're in a box or outside of a box?
Councillor, because I do believe we need restrictions, and that was the whole process we did.
Aha, aha, and there we go.
And there's the balance. But the balance is, and where I changed, put my motion, which was the original staff recommendations, is the balance is to allow homeowners with a secondary unit the ability to rent it out on Airbnb.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. I think we're all feeling we're in a box today.
I think we have one more.
Councillor Fletcher. Yeah, more like a cage.
Certainly not debating. I had understood from city staff and others that the current number of tenants or renters occupying secondary suites was 70,000 or one-fifth of all our rental. Did you understand the same thing I did, councillor?
Yes, I believe it was around there, 60 to 70,000.
60 to 70,000. And if I'm not wrong, that's the same number that's on our waiting list for Toronto Committee Housing, and you would be aware of that as the budget chief?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
About 70,000 who don't have anywhere, are looking for a place to live, and 70,000 who are in secondary suites. If for any reason your motion was to propel those people who are renting out secondary suites to eliminate those renters in favor of Airbnb, does it not concern you that we may be reducing the amount of space for rentals and tenants, actual tenancies in the city?
First of all, councillor, and I have to state that I believe there, there's a difference between the long-term renting of a secondary suite, because we're talking about, and what the, the people in the audience talk about the secondary suite on Airbnb. They're two different platforms, understanding that, and I don't think, and we would have seen already the last couple of years, because Airbnb has been working without regulations, you would have seen this migration of all of these people who had renting, renting out secondary suites going over to Airbnb. You haven't seen that, because right now Airbnb, as I understand, have about 700 units across the city. Under your scenario, it would be more attractive for hundreds, if not thousands, to go over. That hasn't happened, because there's a difference. With Airbnb, there is work. There is work on a day-to-day basis, there's a work on a weekly basis. You have to, and I've been on Airbnb, I've traveled on Airbnb this, this summer. You actually have to go and understand what the hosts are about, there's work involved in that. I think there are certain, a certain aspect of long-term renters that they don't want to be involved in that. They just want a tenant, they want to sign a lease, they want them to interact, and they get the money. So I don't think you'll see that migration. As staff have said, there are no stats. There are absolutely no stats that would suggest that at all.
Are you aware that in Victoria, that they have had to cap this because they've seen such a migration of rental over to Airbnb?
Well, again, I mean...
At least 300 units, and they're at 0.6% of vacancy.
Again, councillor, we, I'll, I'll repeat what I said. We've had, in an unregulated atmosphere over the last couple of years, that opportunity. We haven't seen that migration to this point yet, and do I think it'll continue after we have the regulations? No, I don't. Because the big part of what we're doing is the primary residence. That's the big factor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wong Tan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Counselor, I want to understand, from the consultations that were conducted before staff drew their conclusions, stakeholders wanted to rent out their entire room, up to three rooms, and they all felt that that was largely a balanced approach. So, this is what's before us, a recommendation, and I think you agree to that.
Yeah, I think we all agree with that.
But stakeholders were also very evenly split between whether or not secondary suites could be used, so that it seems to me that, you know, staff could have gone either way with their recommendation. In this case, they chose what you're now putting forward. But you would agree that there was no broad-based consensus amongst the stakeholder consultations? Would you not agree? It's in the report.
No, I agree, ma'am. Like I said, it was a balanced approach to sort of looking at all these scenarios, it was absolutely balanced.
So, not every secondary suite in the city are legal. Not every single secondary suite has all the right conformities to the building code. So, you've now placed the staff recommendations and you're backing it. How far do you want to go? Because there's also illegal secondary suites, illegal units. Do you want to open them up as well?
No, I mean, Counselor, I mean, when I'm looking at, and like out in Scarborough, we have basement apartments, they are, you know, they're not necessarily legal. You have to follow certain, you know, permits and all of that. But I'm not looking at that particular issue in what I'm doing, and even with Counselor Blouse's motion. So, ours are different in one respect, but they're the same in dealing with the other issues about illegal and legal. That is a bigger conversation that absolutely has to happen. We need to look at that citywide, but it doesn't have the same context between, the difference between the two motions.
In your answers to other questioners, you reference that you want to be able to give homeowners, property owners, as much freedom as possible for them to do what they want with their properties, correct?
Not full freedom. First of all, it's, I mean, I do agree that the permanent residence, it can only be the permanent residence. I do support the staff recommendations about maximum of 180 days a year. So, it's not everything. It's there, within a balanced format, certain restrictions that allow them to continue to have the ability to rent their properties out, or their secondary suites out on Airbnb.
Counselor, you also mentioned that perhaps that these secondary suites, these units in basements could probably help us offset the shelter demand, the demand for our shelters. And so, the per diems for shelters, $108 per night, that includes the provision of three meals and two healthy snacks. Is that what you're proposing, is that we can actually move people who are actually requiring shelters to these secondary suites for this price?
Okay, that was your last question. Okay, Counselor Crawford? Okay. Thank you. No, we're going to continue here. No. Okay, please, Counselor Wong-Tan, we want to move along with the item. We're not here to debate or make statements. Counselor Crawford, did you want to answer that?
Counselor, again, first of all, it's not about my motion, but clarification of the motion. I think it's something we could look at. I mean, out in Scarborough, if it's $50, and I looked recently, $50 a night to rent a room, if those homeowners wanted to approach the city to say, "Listen, we're going to be, we want to help out on the housing crisis, we're more than willing to bring in a mother and a child or a young family..."
Thank you, Counselor Crawford. You know, questions are for clarification, Counselor Wong-Tan, on the motion and what's before us. Counselor Hart to speak. Counselor, yes, Counselor Wong-Tan?
Counselor Crawford had answered a question in a particular way, which was confusing to me, and I simply asked for clarification. And he answered that question based on a question about his motion.
And that's what, my comments were to Counselor Crawford as well, not just to you, Counselor Wong-Tan. Thank you. Counselor Hart to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. I stand up to support the original staff report and Counselor Crawford.
Let's hear you.
Counselor Hart?
Hey, Speaker, I stand up to support the original staff report and Counselor Crawford's motion. There's lots of well-intentioned motions, I think, on the table, but from an enforcement perspective, and I won't belabor it because others have said it, there are issues in this report that will be really challenging to enforce. Primary residence will be a challenge, 180 days is going to be a challenge, and secondary suites, if they're excluded, will be a challenge if they're used. But I won't belabor that, I'll leave that up to my friends in MLS to figure out how to do all of that, and it will be a challenge. What I want to talk about though is the law of unintended consequences. If we approve what's potentially before us today and what came out of committee and exclude the secondary suites, I look at those people in the audience that perhaps are using secondary suites who have no intention of renting them full-time. But I look to the seniors that came in my office and said, "You know, they go south for the winter, and they want to rent out their home for the entire winter." Well, you know what? They'll be able to do that, but they won't be able to rent out the secondary suite in the basement, they'll have to put a lock on that. So, they'll rent out that home for less money. Why they have to put a lock on that secondary suite, I have no idea, when they have no intention of renting it out full-time. I hear the seniors and young couples that came to committee licensing and standards who said that they want to keep that secondary suite for visiting relatives, but they do rent it out sometime on Airbnb and other platforms. I guess we could tell them they can't do that, and their relatives, when they come to visit them, can go to hotels. We could say that, but I don't think that's reasonable, it's their house. So, I think we have to take a little bit of a common sense approach when we move forward with this report. I think we've come to a middle ground, we have 180 days in there, I wouldn't necessarily have recommended that. We have principal residents in there, I personally would have said one residence, because I think principal residence is going to be tricky to enforce. But I think we're in a real common ground, I think we're in the middle, and I highly encourage everyone to support Counselor Crawford, and let's hope that MLS can enforce what we're adopting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Karagianis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do have a couple of motions that I'm asking staff to put up, please. Want to put my time on hold?
Your clock is running?
I have a couple of motions that I'd like the staff to put on, please. So, you want to restart my time?
I'm going to restart your time, yes.
Thank you very much.
You can start speaking, the motions are coming.
All right, Madam Speaker. The first motion is that we look at this in a year's time after the implementation of the bylaw. The second, the second set of motions, and they've been pre-circulated, refer to the tenant and the homeowner, that the tenant must have authorization from the, the tenant must have authorization from the owner. The other one refers to that the tenant must be 18 years of age and over. The second one is government-issued ID. I'm also speaking to the fact that the homeowner must be in the house when this rental is going on. Number three speaks to the fact that we must look and get consent within 100-meter radius of the owner of the house that wants to turn it to an Airbnb in order for him or her to be operating as an Airbnb. There's been instances in the streets that people renting as an Airbnb and the renters are doing anything else but using the house in order to sleep when they're having parties, and the police is called in the morning. The, I'm also recommending that the operator gets police clearance before she or he rents out his place. The operators must be present at all times on the property during the rental period. On five, I'm mending recommendation 25 by deleting 50, replacing with 100. And so, the operator must pay $100 to the city. The agency or the Airbnb or the platform must pay $10,000 instead of $2 per night, $1 per night to be $2 bucks per night. Now, Madam Speaker, there's all kinds of things that we have in front of us. I had an Airbnb on my street this year, and what happened is that it ended up being nothing else but an Airbnb, but a party, a wild party, and at 3:00 in the morning, we had to call the police. There's other instances such as this. So, I highly recommend that if we're looking to go down the road of allowing this to happen, that the person, the operator, must be on the premises on the house. If the operator is absent, there's no control as what happens at the house. Even the operator must be a little bit cognizant of his or her house, that if he rents it, she rents it out, and they're not there, the person that comes in might destroy the house completely, might just got it. So, it's, if we're going to have neighborhood, and if we have stability neighborhoods, I would say that we must be there. Now, one of the other things that we have to look at, we were advised that we're allowed to, this to happen 880 days a year. If the cost of an Airbnb, like one room, one room and one room alone, 180 days a year, that's $18,000. If that was to be rented out, if the person visiting was to go to a hotel, he or she would have to pay HSD. We're not collecting HSD here, because the operator is probably earning less than $30,000 a year. We are then missing out on $2,340 yearly that is not collected on HSD. Over the year, that adds up, $46,800,000 that HSD is not collected upon. The other thing that we don't, we're missing out, is that 180 days, that $100 a night, comes out, we have a destination tax that the hotels charge of 4%. That is $14,400 to the city. When you add those two numbers up, $14,400 that we as a city is not getting, and $46,800 that HSD is not being collected upon, it comes out to $51 million. Not one, not two, $51 million. If you talk to the hotel industry, and you talk to anybody that's an economist and say, "For every dollar that is brought into the city of Toronto, how much, how many dollars does that really mean in spending or doing things within the city?" And they will tell you, "For every dollar, there's $16. For every dollar that we're missing in taxes, there's $16 that the economy does not generate." Now, multiply $51 million times 16, 820,800,000. Folks, we're about to lose $1 billion. But we're told by the economic development people that, you know, having Airbnbs, it adds to the hotel industry. I fail to understand this. The other thing that we must be cognizant of is not all these...
We'll wrap up pretty soon, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, I think my time's up.
Okay, thank you. Oops, sorry. Counselor Mehavik?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Mehavik, I checked, you are going to ask a question. Counselor Platziot, a question of Counselor Karagianis?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, yes, I do. Recommendation number three, Counselor Karagianis, you are recommending that the neighbors be pulled within 100-meter radius. Is are you trying to do something similar to what we do with the Committee of Adjustment applications or planning development applications? What's the rationale on that?
Counselor, if you're going to change your house and you want to build an addition in the back of the house that does not confront what you have already...
No, no, this rental, we're talking about the rental unit, can that apply to any rental?
Counselor, you asked a question, let me finish, please, or I will wait until you finish your question, what you want. Okay, what I'm trying to do, if you're trying to build an addition to your home, you have to go and ask your neighbors, and if it does not confront what is there, you'll have to go to the Committee of Adjustment. Similarly here, what I am asking for is that the owner of the house, when she or he wants to turn it into an Airbnb, it changes the quote-unquote "single-family" home. He or she should go around and inform their neighbors. Now, would it be that he or she gets a written consent and provides it, or that we do it? That is something to the executive director decide.
Strange, okay. Recommendation number three A, which were somehow modifying my recommendation, my recommendation, have you checked with city staff when you did, when you drafted your recommendation?
Check to see, that what?
Mine is actually, literally, exactly the same.
Well, if I guess it was exactly the same, I'll either support yours, you will support mine?
No, 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 it's, yours should be out of order.
Why would mine be out of order?
Yeah, because yours is a little bit confusing, dunder, complicated, discriminatory, address, government identity.
Counselor, you may want to use your time to ask other questions as to whether the second place in the motion is out of order. I've asked clerks to look at it, so Madam Speaker will let us know when it's time to vote, whether or not one is out of order.
That's fantastic.
I believe yours will be placed first.
Anything else?
Thank you.
You're good? Fantastic.
We'll move to Counselor Mehavik, seeing no other questions.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Let me first say that in my direct experience of Airbnb, I've had nothing but frankly a good time. When I've been...
A good time was had by all.
And when my daughter lived in the Netherlands and I went to visit her, we did some hotels and we did some Airbnb, and what a wonderful way to meet Dutch folks, and rural and urban, and figure out really our common humanity. And then we went, and I'm sure you're impressed by it, when we went on the Camino last, in Spain, when we were in Spain last year, we did some hotel and we did some Airbnb, and it was a great way, in this case, it was in Barcelona, for my partner and I to be, to have some great conversations about life in the big city of Barcelona. And I think people have a good time with it. And I think that was actually the original vision of Airbnb. It was to have that kind of intercultural, some people could make a little money, but it facilitated this kind of home-sharing that allowed that kind of discussion, that allowed those discussions, that kind of, those kinds of exchanges to occur. And I think what has happened in the last little while is frankly, call it scope creep. What became, what was a simple home-sharing platform now is threatening, frankly, our affordable housing. When we have less than 1% vacancy, when we have 70,000 to 100,000 units of housing in people's third floor, second floor, first floor, back floor, basement, and if we allow those units to go onto the Airbnb platform, that's going to impact our housing. We know it is. Our staff have said, "You should proceed in this direction with great caution." And I think we should take that advice and understand that the heated conversation that we had yesterday around homelessness, and the answer to homelessness is housing, and today, the debate is the other side of that coin, and we're talking about housing, and we're talking about a market that is less than 1% of housing availability out there, then there's some, we should be making some connections there. And I think we really should take those points and put them in the same picture. Now, I can imagine that if we lived in Toronto where there was a 5% vacancy rate, that maybe this would be a different conversation. You would not see the hesitancy that we might see, that we have seen today from staff and from those who are giving us a wise counsel. But in this market, I don't see it. We are not fulfilling our responsibility to providing affordable housing if we allow Airbnb to take up those units. And we've already seen it happening in Toronto right now as we speak. Another point that is really convincing to me was our negotiations with the provincial and federal governments. So, in the past, they have offered programs of support to homeowners in an attempt to increase affordability. If you maintained a secondary unit at an affordable level, that you could apply for grants to help you do, make them, put them to code, and so on and so forth. Now, what argument would we have, and I checked this with staff, what would our argument be to the provincial government if we just let it rip and let Airbnb and let the market decide everything? What would our conversations be like with other orders of government if we tried as that, as a part of the housing strategy, to say, "You know what, Airbnb is allowed everywhere and anywhere"? We would lose those arguments. So, for that reason, Madam Speaker, I think that we should give some, give deep thought to the motion that is being put forth by Counselor Blouse, who we have, who the mayor has appointed to be the housing advocate. Take her wise counsel and support her motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Mehavik. Counselor Carroll to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is one of those things that happens every couple of years in council through you, Madam Speaker, to Mayor Tory. He shouldn't think this means we have an acrimonious council or an acrimonious community on this issue. This happens from time to time. I've seen it happen many times, where we started out with a good staff report, and we play with it a little in standing committee, and we end... play with it a little in standing committee and we end up with some recommendations that really don't get it quite right. They don't, they don't serve, they don't serve everyone. And that's what's happening for the folks that are joining us today in, in council. The standing committee recommendations, because maybe we were three-quarters of the way baked, we weren't quite there and we went, went a little too far in the committee's adjustments. That happens. It's happened before. Here's the danger. What has happened is we've all been trying to work on, how do we get it quite right? How do we make a solution? And my residents are looking for a solution as well. In, in Ward 33, we have a neighbourhood that was created, basically created as a result of the opening up of the idea of being able to rent out a basement apartment in the then borough of North York. And when they said, we're going to allow basement apartments, and they hadn't until then, there was an entire subdivision created with beautiful three-bedroom, separate entrance apartments in the basement. We call it Shawnee Park. And those units have been used for whole families, for new settlement families. They've also been used for something that the cultural group there nicknamed "all-day houses." Those are brothels. We have rules against brothels. So this hue and cry that we can never tell homeowners what to do is really kind of a red herring. We've been telling people what they can do in their, their private dwellings for about 100 years. You're not allowed to run a brothel in your residential home. So it isn't the first time that a municipal government has ever said, you have to have some rules. And generally, when rules are created, it's around a problem. And whether we like it or not, the problem right now, the single most important problem, the problem that Mayor Tory has made, number one in his mandate, that we have all signed on and agreed with him, is the housing shortage. We are in what we have all been calling a housing crisis this entire term. Federation of Canadian Municipalities calls it that right across the country. And in those cities where Airbnb became prevalent, they've had, they've generally been places where they too have a housing crisis and they've addressed it. And where they have addressed it, the way that councillor Bai-Lau is asking to address it, it is working. And in those cities, what they've said is, we're not saying you can't make money in your homes, but we're asking you to first make money in the housing market. And then you and your tenant, who you are, are, having in your home because of the housing market's need for that unit, can work out how you're going to make additional monies. Go right ahead. In San Francisco, you can put your, you can put in your lease, I don't want Airbnb-ing. I'll take this tenant and I'm going to charge him $3,000 a month, but I don't want any Airbnbs. Guess what happens? They don't get the $3,000 a month. The amount you can rent goes down a little bit, because people do, as tenants, like to do this. But if you put in there, you are allowed to Airbnb when you travel, but I, as your landlord, want to know about it, I might even want to take, I might even want some of that money. And the amount you can rent for goes back up. You make the principal tenancy money and you make money on top of that. It's up to you, it's in the lease, and that lease is not a matter for city government. We heard that earlier. You know, if you're homeowners and you're renting in any capacity, you know who that's a matter for. That's a matter for the rental tribunal that is run by the province. And it's okay, because this short-term rental is neither subletting nor long-term letting, it's a special animal and you get to work that out and put the terms in your lease. That wasn't discussed when we made the mistake. Only the fact that we made the mistake was discussed. And so 10 solutions were devised, including councillor Crawford's. I happen to support the solution devised by the housing advocate because it is the one that allows you to make money, but it allows us to keep our promise. We made a promise to every Torontonian to do whatever we could to allay the housing crisis that plagues this city.
Thank you councillor Carroll. Thank you, your time's up. Councillor Fletcher.
Thank you, Speaker. And everyone's asking me what I'm doing with my rap. It's very chilly in front of the door because of the draft coming from the elevator. So just to let everyone know, I do have a motion here that reflects the conversation I had with Mr. Gadden earlier today, the questions that I was asking him, which essentially was to be able to protect all of the affordable rental housing that we have spent multi, multi, multi-millions of dollars building and ensure that they're not moved out of long-term rental. So that would be a matter for all of the Affordable Housing Office and then the housing providers who have stepped up to build some of that. Toronto Community Housing, Wigwaman, Woodgreen and others, what their tenancy leases and arrangement look like with their tenants. And I think I could be quite clear that our affordable housing program, from the day that councillor Mamalidi penned the first one under, under Mayor David Miller called HOT, Housing Opportunities for Toronto, it went to FCM. It was a very important document. It was the first kind of broad housing strategy of the new mega-city. And from that day, we have been very focused on building affordable housing in the city of Toronto, renewing affordable housing, understanding how important it is to have a, a strong and healthy rental market. And I'm simply, I'm not taking anything away from all the good people that are here today that have their short-term rentals and are part of Airbnb, but I'm sure that from this discussion, they also understand that as a council, we do have this obligation around affordable, affordable housing, around tenancies, and in watching what the trends are in the city. And earlier I had indicated that in Victoria, they watched those trends and they noticed that there was a collapsing of the rental market. And I don't mean Airbnb, short-term rental, I mean the long-term stable rental market that we just assume is in place. I mean, all of us, many of us assume that. And many of us are homeowners. There aren't a lot of tenants here with us today. Tenants also have a different perspective. They're very interested in ensuring they have a stable tenancy for themselves, for their children, for their families. And we have had a real issue with rental housing in the city of Toronto over the last number of years. There has not been a lot that has been built. There simply hasn't been a lot built. We've had a condo crazy spree in the city of Toronto. That's all we talk about are condos, condos on Queen Street, condos on Bay Street, condos in Willowdale, condos in Hyde Park, condos on Bathurst, condos everywhere across the city. And it's been a struggle to try to push rental housing as part of our development strategy, even in the regeneration of Regent Park. All those units, 2,000 units were regenerated and rebuilt. 5,000 condos and very little affordable rental was part of that. Only now are we starting to discuss the affordable rentals, importance of rental housing as part of our overall portfolios when we are rebuilding some of our very outdated and outmoded Toronto community housing. So in looking at Airbnb and finding a way that everybody can have something that they need, people can be able to rent their primary residence. And for all of those who talk about tenants, I just have to say for the tenant, that is their primary residence. That's, that is their primary residence. And I'm a little concerned about how we seem to be talking about tenants. Many of us are homeowners, we understand it from that vantage point, but as councillors, we have to also put on our other hats. We have to understand it from the point of view of a tenant who needs a stable place, long-term place to live and not be worried about being moved out because of a short-term rental situation that we've somehow made legal. So I would just ask, support councillor Bai-Lau on this, which will align all the policies in one way and bring fairness all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perks, I just want to remember, to remind members of council that we have a full agenda. Councillor Perks, I'll restart your time.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Members, the way an issue is presented to us has an awful lot to do with how we think about it. And I'll tell you something, Airbnb has put a tremendous amount of effort and time into trying to shape how we see this issue. That's why, and I want to credit Matt Elliott with this statistic, the 14 registered lobbyists for Airbnb have had 1,474 contacts with members of council and Toronto city staff this year. 1,474 individual contacts with elected officials and members of the public service to try to get us to understand the issue the way they want us to understand the issue. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the aspects of this that Airbnb hasn't chosen to make us aware of during this debate. They've tried to present us with an idea that what this debate really is about is a middle-class family in the city of Toronto who's struggling to continue to own their own home and needs some revenue. And I see you, sir. I see you, I see you waving your hands. Yes, I'm on the Planning and Growth Committee, I heard many of your deputations. Airbnb did not come and tell us that they're valued at $31 billion as a corporation. Airbnb, $31 billion. Airbnb did not bring some of the people in Parkdale who have had experience with Airbnb to make deputations. I'm going to tell you one story. There's a property on my street, six-unit building. Guy buys it, guy says he's going to renovate it, starts to do renovations, comes in for his building permit, gives everyone an eviction notice. We, some of the tenants push back, say we have legal rights here, others can't be bothered, it's too much hassle, they know that they're going to lose in the end anyway because landlord-tenant law is skewed towards landlords in this province. It absolutely is. And, so they give up and leave. They give up and leave. The guy resells the property now that half the tenants have left. The new owner changes the locks on the existing units. The tenant phones me up. I'll tell you right now, more than half of my workload in Parkdale is dealing with issues like this. Tenant phones me up and says, my landlord has locked me out of my apartment, what do I do? I tell him, phone the police. He phones the police, police go and get the door open. Landlord changes the lock again. Why am I telling you this story? Guess what that unit is used for now? It's an Airbnb unit. It's an Airbnb unit which goes for three times as much money on a daily basis as what that tenant was paying. You don't see that tenant here. Airbnb did not bring him down to make a deputation. They didn't contact him and say, hey, why don't you come and talk to city council about the fact that you lost your home, that the rent you were paying is something that you cannot find anywhere in Toronto's market right now and you no longer live in the city of Toronto? Because that's the end of that story. Nor did they bring down the predatory landlord who bought the building and locked these people out. You guys are not that guy, I know that. But that is part of Airbnb's business model, it has been since day one. I've challenged them repeatedly when they've come to talk to me, and yes, I even had my one meeting with them too. That's one of the 1474, I don't know who the other 1473 meetings were. And I challenged them, I said, what are you going to do in your business model to protect people who are being evicted from homes they can't replace by predatory landlords? And they said to me, well, you know, we hope that the city will take care of that. That's how you get to be a $31 billion corporation. Yes, that's right. If I have my choice about whose interests I protect, it's not a venture capitalist who's getting a big rate of return on the money they gave Airbnb. My duty, Giorgio Mamalidi, like your duty, is to your constituents, whether they're tenants or homeowners. And that brings me to my final point.
Councillor Mamalidi, stop interrupting.
That brings me to my final point. I continue to be amazed at the debates in this council, at the double standard. You would think that in, in law, we only represented homeowners. I cannot believe the horrible things I have heard said on this floor today about tenants. Half the people we represent are tenants. We're, they're not-
Over half.
Over half the people, thank you. They're not worried about their nest egg and how they're going to hang on to it and whether they can make a big profit off their investment property, because they don't have one.
Thank you councillor Perks. Councillor De Bearmaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'd certainly like to extend my thanks to staff and everyone who's participated in getting the report this far before council. I will be supporting councillor Crawford's motion that would allow people to rent out their basement apartments or their secondary suites or whatever you want to call them, to people through the Airbnb or for short-term rental accommodation. I actually think this report does protect tenants. I like tenants, some of my best friends are tenants. I have no problem trying to protect tenants. This report actually says you have to be an owner-occupied dwelling in order for you to go on short-term rentals. So I think the supply of housing, we can debate whether it's affordable or not, but the, the scenario where one person owns 10 condo units and is renting them out on Airbnb is going to end. And it's going to end very quickly because Airbnb won't even host their sites anymore, because I'm assuming, just like many other large companies, they're a $31 billion company, I don't think that $31 billion company, once the law is made and they say, if Mr. De Bearmaker owns 10 units, he's not allowed to advertise 10 units on your site, he's only allowed to rent one, and if you do, we'll take away your privileges and you suffer the consequences. So I actually think tenants are protected in this. But I don't think short-term rentals were devised to address the affordable housing crisis that we have. Councillor Mehevick and his daughter, unbeknownst to them, perhaps were contributing to a housing crisis in Barcelona, because his charming daughter-
Owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied. But he, he rented in a short-term lease, a basement apartment or a couple of rooms. So he was taking up-
One bedroom.
One bedroom. He was taking up one bedroom that could have been occupied by a tenant living in Barcelona. He occupied space that he shouldn't have been. He thought it was a charming experience, he thought he was just going and doing a cultural exchange, but he was taking up space in a home that could have been rented out to, as part of an emergency shelter system, to somebody who was homeless, to somebody who's down on their luck. Didn't do that. So I find that there's no problem in saying, in your house, you're allowed to rent your basement, if you want to do it long-term and have a year lease, go ahead. If you want to rent your basement apartment out to some nice people from Germany coming in for a week or two, or somebody from North Bay who's coming down for some cancer treatment for a month or two, you can do that. I, I really don't think that the bylaw as proposed by others is enforceable, because I couldn't imagine renting out my basement apartment, say to councillor Holliday, a very nice gentleman comes and rents my basement apartment. I come home from work one day and there's three nice German people in my basement apartment. I'll say, wait a second, I didn't rent my basement apartment to you. No, you rented it to Mr. Holliday, but he's, he's now on Airbnb and he's rented it to us. And the three Germans next week will leave and there'll be three Brazilians there. And the week after that, there'll be maybe a family from Hong Kong who's coming in to visit relatives. This is my house and in my basement apartment, I've got people coming and going and it's all legal and I can't stop them, whether I like them or not, because councillor Holliday is renting out on Airbnb. That's crazy. I don't think that's the way that we want to run our, our society. I don't think, that's what we want to tell, tell homeowners, is that the person who rents your basement apartment can sublease it to whoever they want. And if you're smart enough and clever enough and have a BA or an MA or PhD and you're really good with legalese, maybe you'll prevent your tenant from doing that. But I live in Scarborough, most people wouldn't be engaged and smart enough to do that because they're not lawyers, they're just average people renting out their basement apartments. In terms of enforcement, I don't think our, I don't think our staff will ever be able to enforce the other bylaw, because if I had a basement apartment, could I lease my basement apartment to my wife or to my brother? I think I could. And then my wife could lease out my basement apartment to people who own Airbnb. Totally legal. So the loopholes and the enforcement issue, like councillor Hart said earlier, you're never going to be able to enforce a bylaw unless, unless you actually go inside that person's house and start having our inspectors live there too. So you can find out who's living in their basement, what time they come, what time they leave, what legal agreements they have. So I think it's too much for us to ask. We do a lot of things to help affordable housing and we should continue to do that, but saying to a short-term rental agency and to people who decide that maybe they want to rent, rent out their basement apartment every once in a while, that you can't do that, that you have to go into the long-term rental business, when they don't want to do the long-term rental business, I don't think is the right path to pursue. So I would encourage people to support-
Thank you councillor De Bearmaker. Thank you, Counselor DeBaermaker. Counselor Giorgio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will also be supporting Counselor Crawford's motion. I think, you know, we're trying to regulate home sharing, and home sharing is a very nice concept. As a matter of fact, as I stated at the committee, I grew up in a home-sharing environment where the environment was not quite the same as home-sharing is today because there was no separation in the living quarters in the home that I shared with a bunch of people, including my own family. And I honestly think that proceeding the way Counselor Crawford's motion is intended to proceed will actually improve the supply of affordable housing. Let me explain why. We have 70,000 to 100,000 units, basement apartments, that are not licensed and yet are being rented out. And you can rest assured that that 70,000 to 100,000 basement apartments are not going to attract short-term visitors. There will not be quality accommodation. On the other hand, I have plenty of people in my area who could rent out space but decide not to, simply because they've had horrible experiences with tenants. An old lady rents out a basement apartment and she has a horrible tenant, whether he doesn't pay or whatever, and she has one heck of a time to get rid of them. And so they don't participate in that market. On the other hand, if I could say to some of the people that don't have licensed apartments or that want to think about renting their apartment, you know what? There is a possibility here that you can rent on a short-term basis, month, two months, if it turns out, if it turns out that you've got someone and by mutual consent, they might want to stay on a longer-term basis. That's terrific. We can enter into a longer-term agreement. But don't lock somebody into a long-term agreement where a poor old lady is then taken advantage of. That's basically what affordable housing in my area is all about. And, and let me tell you this. Let me tell you this. Sit down. Let me tell you, let's talk about how do you really create affordable housing? You don't create affordable housing by going with gentrification downtown and then make the mistake of not making sure that the affordable housing is replaced at the time of gentrification. Instead what you do, 10 years down the road, you say, "Holy smokes, we've got homeless problems downtown." Of course you've got homeless problems downtown. You didn't solve the problem at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Giorgio. Counselor Philian.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to start out by thanking the staff as others have. Tracy, I don't know what you did in a past life to get the files you get, but really both planning and MLS has been a...
Counselor Philian, if I could just interrupt you, I'm having trouble hearing, I'm having trouble hearing the speakers. Thank you. The area around the mayor's staff. I may have to use the gavel. On the area around the mayor's staff, I'm having trouble hearing the speakers from the chair. Thank you.
Maybe you could start my time over. Thank you.
Start right from the beginning, Counselor Philian.
Yes, so thanking staff for a great job with an incredibly complex situation. I'm urging us to not support Counselor Crawford's motion. The planning committee did a really good job, I think, in saying you cannot rent out secondary suites. And we all know in this city, Counselor Kelly, please. We all know that in this city, it's not just low-income people who have trouble finding accommodation, it's even people with very medium incomes that have difficulty finding a place to live. And basement apartments are a good alternative. I also want to point out, it doesn't mean that you can't rent out a room in your basement as we've heard, you just can't rent out a full-service secondary suite. Like Counselor Mehavik, I've used Airbnb when I've visited other cities. I have never rented anything that had its own contained kitchen. You don't need that. You can have a coffee maker, you can have a microwave, you can have a coffee and muffin for breakfast. You don't need a full-service kitchen. And if you don't have that, you can still, it's not a secondary suite, and you can still rent it out. What I mainly, so I'm speaking against Counselor Crawford's motion, I'm also speaking against Counselor Bylaw's motion, which would allow secondary suites to be Airbnb. So you could end up with three units on the top and another three units on the bottom, all being Airbeed and Beed. So the definition of rooming house is an address that has four or more rooms being rented out. A definition of a hotel in the North York bylaw is a place that has six or more units available for short-term rental. So what we are really creating if we pass Counselor Bylaw's amendment is a rooming house for tourists. That's what we're allowing across the city, rooming houses for tourists. Is that a good idea? I don't think so. Is it fair to the hotel industry? I don't think so. Is it fair to the neighbors? It certainly is not. And is it even fair to the people renting the accommodation? Is that what we want? I don't think it's good experience for anybody and we should not be enabling that.
Thank you, Counselor Philian. I have Counselor Ford next.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker. I'd like to move my motion up on the screen. Thank you to City Council Director General Manager of Economic Development Culture to report back on the impact of short-term rental regulations on the city of Toronto's hotel industry, one year after implementation of the regulations. So, so to start off, I want to thank staff and all their hard work on this. I think our Tracy Cook and her team always ends up with the most hot topics we debate in this council chamber. So kudos to yourself and your staff, and chickens amongst many items, of course. So where I'm coming from here, I've met with Airbnb. I met with Airbnb and I really do understand where everyone is coming from here. And there's definitely many certain dynamics and lenses to this debate and is being, you know, hotly debated here on the council floor. But in my ward, specifically in North Atobaco, I have one of the largest hotel sectors in the city along Dixon Road, and that's kind of the lens I'm coming from here today. I do support homeowners renting out their homes, absolutely. I think that is their right. I think the Airbnb concept can work. But I also have some reservations about that, and that's why I would like to see this roll out this year and see where it lands. I will not be supporting Counselor Crawford's motion, but I will also not be supporting Counselor Bylaw's motion. I will be supporting committee recommendations where I believe is the center of the road for myself and the residents I serve and the businesses I serve in the city of Toronto. I also furthermore to this is the MLS component of it and the enforcement component. I do have some concerns about that, but I think in my questions, this will be coming back to us. And I know Tracy Cook and her team will be keeping us informed, and they have taken a step forward in the recommendations before us, committee recommendations that addresses some of those MLS concerns. So thank you, Madam Deputy Speaker.
Thank you. I'm moving to Counselor Matlow.
Madam Speaker, the position that I've arrived at is actually very different than the one that I began at when I first even became cognizant of the issues related to short-term rentals. When I think of Airbnb, I think of my experiences similar to what Counselor Mehavik was talking about earlier, where I've visited cities and I've really enjoyed using Airbnb. I've used it myself and I think it's awesome. And I like, I really appreciate being able to live in a neighborhood or a community, even if it's for a week, and sort of live like, you know, live like a local in a way, be able to, you know, be immersed in the society. So I really appreciate and recognize why it's an attractive service to so many people. So on that, I actually began with a perspective probably on more of the libertarian end of things, where I'm just like, "Why regulate? Why get in the way of something that, like, it's not doing any harm and so many people enjoy?" And then the connection was made for me. We have a crisis when it comes to our vacancy rate in the rental market, like a genuine crisis. The average tenant in the city, they're spending 30% or more of their income on living, on just being able to have a place to live. And many are even getting priced out of the market in many neighborhoods in our city. So we have a large public policy issue to address. And when I heard Sean Gaddin earlier say unequivocally, because I've been, I was struggling with some of the aspects of what was being proposed, including in a Bylaw's motion, when he said so clearly that if we ignored that, it would be bad housing policy. Not, you know, there was no nuance there. I also had in mind, like, some families, for example, who I have a lot of empathy for, who don't want to be locked into a long-term rental arrangement that would like to have that flexibility of having someone stay for a little while and then make some supplementary income. I recognize that that's a real thing. So I actually don't think we should invalidate that perspective by some individuals. I've spoken to friends who do the same thing, and I get it. Like, I totally get why you want to do that. But if I have to compare that with the wider public policy imperative, where we have between 70,000 and 100,000 units that could contribute to addressing such a significant vacancy crisis, it would be irresponsible, I believe, of me to ignore that reality when renters are struggling in the city. Now, I'll conclude by saying that I don't think on the proponent side of that argument that anyone can honestly say that the secondary suites are going to fully address the vacancy crisis. That's just not true. And we have a far more complex challenge to address, and we have to address it. There are a number of ways to do that, and we need to work together to meet that goal. But if we know that we can contribute to meeting that goal, putting more units back onto the market, maybe not all, and maybe some people who are currently having, you know, short-term arrangements may not even want to go into a long-term arrangement, and that's their prerogative. But if some of those 70,000 to 100,000 units are back on the market and we can contribute to addressing this crisis, I feel responsibility to meet that wider public policy goal. And I think it's important that all of us consider that while we vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Leighton.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I'm going to try to be very brief. Colleagues, I struggled with this policy question when it was first put to us, and I'll tell you why. See, I grew up in a household that rented rooms out in our home. We quite frequently, actually all the time, had one or two students living at home with us to help pay the mortgage. And that was normal for me. The notion of opening up your space, of sharing a common area, of once in a while passing each other in the halls on your way to and from things, meeting new people, that was very familiar to me. It's not something I can do now because of the space restrictions in my own home, but it's something I grew up with, and I don't see a problem with that. I actually saw it, they were long-term tenants, so I saw it as something that contributed to the suite of housing opportunities in the city. But when you look at this debate, it's kind of been taken to the extreme in the opposite direction, where what you have is people buying up condominiums, condominium units and renting them all out as if they owned a hotel. And then within the middle, we have what I think a lot of the debate is about here. Now, for a very good reason, we are taking off the table this notion of whole-home rental when you're not the, when you don't live there. There's a really good policy reason for that. And that's because those units could very easily and would likely to a very close, small fraction, all be put back in to the housing mix within the city. And on the other side of the spectrum, we're saying, "You know what? If you want to rent out a room in your house, that's fine. If it's within your dwelling unit, that's okay." It's not something that would enter the long-term, or not likely to enter the long-term market, and it wouldn't have the same implications or would have the same current implications around tenancy of rooms in that a landlord could have a tenant leave because they were in their space. In that, in this middle area of secondary suites is where I struggled. Because I met with, I was one of those 12,000, 1,200 meetings of Airbnb. I also met with some hosts in my ward, and I've heard from a lot of them. And I sat and met with some residents in my ward concerned about the loss of housing. And so I put a lot of thought into where would, what principles should we be applying across the board? And where it left me with was that a secondary suite, if it could be a primary living dwelling, if it could exist on its own and add to our housing market, should be treated as an independent unit. And I get, I understand there are 1,001 different variations of this. There are special cases that I know people have talked to me and tell you what, I'll tell you the truth, I was actually thinking about doing this very same thing when my family determined we were going to have another child and we needed to move to get a little bit more space, because I have in-laws. They like to stay. I don't mind because that's childcare. That's childcare. That's built-in childcare, but I don't have space for them to stay, you see? And do I really want them living on top of me all the time? So we were looking at what options would exist to have in-laws come in, and this was one of those options. Unfortunately, as it turns out, in the neighborhood I represent, we couldn't afford some of those options that had that much more space ready to offer, so we have people surfing on a couch, like family gladly does on occasion. But if we apply that principle of we can't let a unit exist, a housing unit exist without being used and without adding to our housing market, then we are not doing our job as a city council. We're not looking at that first principle about trying to protect the residents, all residents of our community. Because the one argument that I'm hearing here today over and over and over again is pitting the property rights of a single solitary homeowner against the collective health of our overall housing market. And I got to tell you, it's real clear which one we need to support and what duty we have to support. And that's the right of the housing market as a whole. I will add, my decision has been made that much easier by two of my colleagues' comments. One, being Counselor DeBaermaker, who essentially got up and said his residents would not be smart enough to write in to a lease that they would be protected. He misrepresented Counselor Bylaw's motion by saying that a tenant could without discussions with a landlord, enter into Airbnb.
Thank you, Counselor Leighton. Sorry, your time's up. Counselor Wong Tam.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to start off by saying that I think it's important for us to all remember that short-term furnished rentals have been an actual thing in Toronto for years, decades. This is not new. What's new is this new platform or the series of platforms that are before us that allows this rampant and scaled-up commodification of these short-term furnished rentals. And so, of course, everybody wants to jump on this because now it's really easy. The threshold has been practically removed. Anybody can do this. And of course, what we've seen is that a lot of people have taken advantage of the fact that there haven't been clear rules. Now, why we need clear rules today is because we didn't have 20,000 units that have been taken off the market and placed onto Airbnb, because there wasn't this proliferation before. But what those 20,000 units have done is largely now... 20,000 units have done is largely now, if I put it into context, in terms of the incremental effect of what's happened, with respect to very easy credit money that's available, the fact that a lot of people have purchased not just one home, but multiple properties, because they're not, they're very easy to have now picked up through easy credit and easy money. So these properties have now been commodified. And I know that people are factoring in, when they apply for the mortgages, when they apply for these home loans, they factor it in Airbnb-style incomes. So it's almost a self-fulfilling prophecy of what's happened. So, we can probably track it to the fact that we do have 180,000 people who are on the waitlist for affordable housing. I don't believe that Airbnb is going to put the death blow in it, but certainly it's not coming online to help it in a situation that's already exacerbated. So what do we have here? We have a housing crisis, and every single politician in this city has uttered those words at some point, I believe. We also have a shelter crisis. We had a very big, very difficult conversation about that yesterday. What I'd like to do is thread them all together, because I think it's absolutely critical for us to take a look at this policy from a bigger, high-level city perspective. Right now, we are in some very uneasy times. We have a bit of a winner-takes-all approach when it comes to urbanization. And that means if communities are destabilized, with housing stock that's destabilized, where you have people coming and going, that makes for a very unhealthy neighborhood. Unhealthy neighborhoods actually bring us to a place of an unhealthy city. So what do you see when you see an unhealthy city? You see more people struggling to make ends meet. You see more people having difficulty holding on to their housing, holding on to their accommodations, and you're seeing more people having difficulty holding on to their jobs, which actually is going to bring me to my point around the hotel supply. It is impossible, Madam Speaker, it is impossible for Toronto to be bidding on conferences and conventions and large meetings if we do not have a healthy supply of hotels. You cannot put a convention in an Airbnb. You just cannot. When you lose hotel rooms and you lose the hotels, you're actually going to take a hit in the cultural tourism sector, you're going to take a hit in the tourism sector overall. So I appreciate some very interesting ads that have come out, and some very interesting stories about how this one traveler comes across, lands in a neighborhood, and does this cultural exchange. But the big city of Toronto doesn't always work like that. We're interested in very large global competitiveness. And if we are indeed interested in building a new convention center, how on earth are we going to be able to do that if you don't have healthy supply of hotel rooms? And that's actually critical into the point of bringing it all home and talking about jobs. Hotels have oftentimes been a generator of middle-class jobs. How are people going to pay their bills, pay their income taxes, keep their homes if they don't have jobs? So, we want to make sure that there is balance to this system, and I agree to that, but we also have to make sure those rules are fair. And I don't think we should ever lose sight on the fact that we want to build a healthy city, healthy communities for the residents here. And I think that if we don't adopt the recommendations from councillor Bilau, and have the proof of residency before us...
Thank you, councillor Wong Tam. Time's up. Okay, councillor, just for members of council, we may have to come back to council next week, just to let you know. Councillor Kelly to speak?
Can we defer this to next week?
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, I want to make three points, hopefully briefly. The first is, and I've listened probably as carefully as possible to the debate that has taken us through most of the day, because this is an important issue. This addresses one of the changes that's affecting the neighborhoods that we live in, the neighborhoods that we represent. And Speaker, I think it's really important that Torontonians understand that we've decided to regulate change, and not in a way that opens things up so much as it restricts them to a manageable context. And that is that Airbnb, and I'm using that as, to cover the 16-plus companies that are in this field, it recognizes the important principle of principal residents. In other words, that if Airbnb, in any of its aspects, is going to be permitted, it has to be in a home in which an owner or a tenant resides. There has to be that presence, Speaker. Where we have a division, so although we agree on about 90% of what's in front of us, we disagree with respect to secondary suites. And the primary issue there, Speaker, is that if you allow homeowners to rent out secondary suites as well as other parts of their house, that you will either reduce the affordable housing stock, or you'll restrict its growth. Now, I haven't seen enough data, Speaker, to indicate that that would be the case. So I would call that argument, in that context, problematic. But because I can't be too sure whether that argument on behalf of social housing, or the other argument on behalf of homeowner rights is accurate, I will, in the interim, support the restriction that would allow both owner and tenant to offer property through Airbnb. And Speaker, it's not unusual for us in making decisions of this sort that are so elementary, and at times so passionate, to, in the end, go through a number of stages over time. And it may be, when we collect all the data that's available to us, over the next few years, we'll be able to definitely come down on one side or the other. But, Speaker, for me, to be safe, to make sure that we present as balanced, a selection of regulations as possible, I will be supporting councillor Bilau's motion.
Thank you. Councillor McMahon?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I don't know why anyone would watch us on TV or here with today. This action's in here today. You know, when I first got elected, my dad told me, "Gone are the days of black and white. You've now entered the world of gray." And I do feel it's a bit of a gray haze in here. I've been struggling all day with this. I feel like I have a few ulcers, and I don't think I'm the only one. I'm hearing that from many of my colleagues about struggling with this. You know, I want people to be able to do what they want in their own homes, and have the freedom to do that, and if they want to include, garner a little bit of extra income from time to time, you know, I'd like them to be able to do that. But I also worry about the vacancy rate. It's disturbing, at 1%. And I worry about keeping people in our city, and allowing, especially for younger people, to live here. And I worry about this incredible project that councillor Bilau and I have been working on for a few years now, called Laneway Suites. And creating more opportunities for people to age in place, stay in their homes, intergenerational living, but allow long-term, permanent rental stock. As we know, Vancouver gets a fifth of their rental stock from their Laneway Suites. So, I don't want to lose that. I didn't like the motion at all at planning and growth. I felt it was pretty restrictive. So, I wasn't happy with that. There's been a bit of a compromise in some work done since then. So I think that that is where I'm finally landing, is to support councillor Bilau's motion as a bit better compromise. It's not ideal, absolutely, and it's, I'm not sure how it's going to fully be enforced at all. But I'm glad there's a report back in a year, so we can figure things out, tweak them more if need be. But I think the focus moving forward should be on growing our rental stock in the city. And so, I hope everyone remembers this lengthy, emotional debate today, when we visit, we have our Laneway Suites policy come forward in the new year, and there's a unanimous vote on that. Because if you really care about that, councillor Mammalidi, and councillor Mammalidi, then maybe you want to move...
Councillor Mammalidi stopped interrupting.
You want to move out of Toronto? Feel free, feel free. I'd have you pack your bags. But that's where I'm at. Thank you. Thanks for interrupting, too.
Yeah. Councillor Campbell, you sit next to councillor Mammalidi. Can you do something? Because I don't have the long enough stick. Councillor Fragadakis to speak. Councillor Kerjanis?
Madam Chair, I'm sure that this was a joke, but it's, you know, in parliamentary language, I don't think it's appropriate, but I realize you must have said it as a joke.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Kerjanis.
It was point of order, Mr. Campbell.
Councillor Kerjanis, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome, Adam.
Yeah, exactly. Councillor Fragadakis? Councillor Campbell, and that's unparliamentary as well, councillor Kerjanis. Councillor Campbell to speak.
It's Fragadakis.
Councillor Fragadakis is not in the council chamber.
Okay, all right, so I'll quickly. So, my analysis of this comes down to the fridge and the stove. Basically, anybody that has set up a secondary suite has done so with the intention of renting it out long-term. They put in a stove, probably 15 or 20 years ago, they got a fridge, the intention was long-term. Now, with Airbnb, they're thinking, "Oh, I don't need a renter and collect 1,500 bucks a month. I can churn that and make a lot more money." So that, of course, clearly is to the detriment of anybody that wants to rent. Now, these regulations, however, that we may bring in prohibiting the churning, if you will, of secondary suites, it won't prohibit people who have secondary suites from still Airbnb-ing them out. They can remove the facilities that make it by definition a secondary suite. You take out the fridge and the stove, and now what you're doing is you're renting out, you're renting out the room as per our regulations. So, I'm going to support, actually, I think the best commentary that was made so far today was from councillor Fillion, who said, "You know, the whole notion of Airbnb was to appeal to tourists who can come to Toronto, they can have a coffee maker, they can have a microwave oven, they come and they go." Their intention really isn't, I don't think, necessarily to set up and have dinner in somebody's basement, you know, cooking a casserole or something, right? So, I think their intention is to have short-term accommodations within a neighborhood, see the city, get in and get out. So, I've heard what councillor Bilau said about, and councillor Perks, what they have said about rental accommodations being in peril. And that resonates enough with me. There is a shortage of rental accommodations. It's our job as a city to enable people to have a decent place to live, and look after the people who are living here, not so much the people who want to make money or the people who are visiting. Our job is to look after people who need housing accommodation. And I guess the other thing, speaking as a councillor from a suburban area that doesn't have a lot of this going on, is that people in my neighborhood, they don't really want Airbnbs. You know, I've had a few calls from houses that all of a sudden, the cars are coming and going at all hours. They don't really want this churn of residents. Now, this will still go on when we approve the Airbnb regulations, but I know that people in my neck of the woods would rather have a long-term rental in somebody's house, rather than a constant flow of taxis going day in and day out. So, I'm going to support the committee recommendations, and I'm not going to support any of the amendments that have been brought forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Councillor Holland to speak?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I had a motion, but I'm not going to move it, just to clerks. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to support the original staff recommendations, which were moved by councillor Crawford. And because I know the real experts in the room, and I know that Tracy Cook's very humble in this regard, but I also know her expertise has grown immensely, because there's nobody that has undertaken a new policy framework and regulatory framework like Tracy Cook. She's becoming an expert in the field, and I know that firsthand. So, I'm going to go back a number of years ago, when we were dealing with probably the first disruptor that was going globally around the world. And that one was, again, a new platform, and something new, and it was new policymakers as well. And what I learned from that, and what I think that we should have all learned from that, is that in this new economy, we can no longer be reactive. We have to be proactive, and we have to be working with the new technologies that are coming out, because simply, the velocity has changed. It's not the same. We cannot be putting motions forward that prevent and block and prevent technology and innovation from taking place. So, what I see, and what I've learned, especially throughout the debate, and within the policy, with the reports, is that obviously we know that there's never been a regulatory framework until now. So that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing today. And there's going to be many iterations. And that's also what we have to educate the public on that are investing in the new technology. Because what we put out forward today, the framework that we put forward, will affect them as well. So if you own a home, and you own a secondary suite, and you've invested in a certain way, and now you're renting it out, you're going to be affected by this framework. So, I want to make sure, as actually councillor Kelly pointed out, since there's not enough data, that we should be going towards the least restricted policies, since we've never had one in place. Since we're dealing with a new framework, we should be creating it as least restrictive as we can. So in that regard, I'll be going back to the experts, who are staff, and who are experts in this field, and put forward a new policy framework. So I'm going back to the staff recommendations. And I also wanted to point out another fact, and that's the issue of enforcement. And councillor Hart and I spoke about this. It's not possible to enforce this in any measure. So putting forward a motion is sort of smoke and mirrors, in saying that, well, we're going to prevent it or block it. You're not going to be able to, because you won't be able to enforce it. That's number one. So, the other issue is coming around to what this will do to our staff when they're collecting all the data from the 16 companies, and that's all filtered in to MLS who now have to sift through that and make sense of that data. We're actually paying for that. We have to pay for that as well. And we have to provide that data to make sure that we have caps per night, which I don't think that we should be doing. Again, I would move a motion to remove the caps per night, or the night caps, as we mentioned, but I won't do that. I'll leave that in place. But again, I know where that falls, and I know that that falls on our shoulders, to go through all of that data, in order to make sense of that, in order to make sure that people are in compliance with that, which, again, is not even enforceable. So, I'll be, again, I'm going to be supporting councillor Crawford's motion. I strongly encourage you to. We're dealing with a new economy, and this is something that us, we as policymakers, have to acknowledge. We're in a completely different age than before, and I encourage you to do that.
Thank you. Councillor Fragadakis, are you ready?
My motion is not ready. I'm just going to wait if...
Okay, we have one more speaker. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Speaker. When I asked questions today, I confirmed the facts about housing in Toronto from our housing staff. We have a waitlist of 181,000 individuals who are waiting... We have a waitlist of 181,000 individuals who are waiting for social housing. There are, as well, federal and provincial government policies right now encouraging us to support secondary suites as a form of affordable housing. Now, that money that they will get is around 250 a month to support accessing housing. It is not going to be the kind of housing that you and I might like to have on the rental market. They will be looking for exactly this kind of housing, secondary suites. Right now, if you look at what, if you happen to find yourself on social assistance, and you're looking at the monthly shelter allowance in Ontario, for a one-person family, it's $384 a month, is the shelter allowance. If you have a four-person family, it's 744. We have, in the city of Toronto, people who are struggling to afford to live here. And I don't know about you, but I want a city that is inclusive, I want a city that is diverse, and I want a city that represents the full range of people. And that means people of different incomes. And if we're going to be able to continue to support low-income families in our city, they must be able to access this kind of housing. Now, I know that there have been many arguments made that these are hard-working families who are attempting to maintain their homes. That option is still there. That option is there to rent those units. Rent them to permanent residents of this city, people who are committed to living here and building our city. I'd much rather make sure that we take care of our residents with affordable housing than offer lower-cost accommodation for tourists. And that's the balance that I think has been missed on the original proposals. And that is the balance that tips with Counselor Bilau's motion in favor of making sure we have a stock of affordable housing for low-income families in our city. So I will be supporting Counselor Bilau's motion. And if the people who are here that have apartments in their basements, please rent them, because we need that housing. And if you're not prepared to rent it for the kind of housing that we need in this city, then what we'll end up doing is building a kind of a tourist Manhattan kind of city that I know many of us do not want to see in our, as the future of the city. We want a mixed-income, diverse, integrated city that cares for everyone, and that means maintaining a stock of affordable housing for families.
Thank you. Counselor Fragadakis.
They're still working on the motion. They're amending it. I apologize.
Well, what are we supposed to do? Because there are no more speakers.
Go down.
Well, that's it. That's it.
Well, if you could give me five minutes. They're typing as fast as they can.
I mean...
I apologize.
Can someone else speak?
Can someone else speak?
Everybody spoke, and they all spoke for five minutes.
Perhaps, maybe Counselor Campbell would like to speak again.
Counselor Cressy is going to speak.
Speaker, I have a motion if I can move. Thank you. Sorry. Speaker, can I have my time on hold while they're getting ready?
Counselor Cressy has a motion. Does the staff have the motion?
Yep. Thank you. And I have a motion related to enforcement and compliance that I'll speak to. Let me begin by just saying that in this long debate, this eight-hour debate today, when you take out, and it's been a year and a half-long debate, when we take out all the noise that's happened, all the meetings, all the activists, and all the lobbyists, and all of everybody, is, for me, I just come back to what are the core principles we should think about in making this decision? And for me, the core principles are twofold. One, we need to make the city affordable for people to live in it. That's one core principle. The other is we need to permit home sharing in a way that doesn't make the city unaffordable. That's it. Two principles. And it's for that reason that I am fully in support of Counselor Bilau's motion and the committee recommendations. I'd like to, and Counselor Mahavish, can I ask you to put something on the screen here? I'd like to show you a picture of what I think this debate is about, and if you want to put that on the projector. This is 38 Kensington Place that you're going to see on the screen. This is in Kensington Market. The screen might not be working. I'll tell you about, here it is. The building you see there in the back, that's 38 Kensington Place. It's located in the heart of Kensington Market. We had, at one point, three large apartments in there, three family-sized, large apartments. The house was bought, all the people living in those three large apartments were slowly dehoused, and it was converted into nine Airbnb units. All the residents, long-term residents, who were renters living in an expensive downtown neighborhood, were dehoused for nine Airbnb units. In June, in Kensington Market, we had 112 Airbnb listings and 12 rental properties listed. This is what home sharing, investor-driven home sharing has done. It has made our city less affordable, and so we have to step in. Now, a lot of the conversation today has not been on the broader investor-driven side, thank goodness. It sounds like we've reached or close to a consensus on that, but it's been about secondary suites. So I come back to that principle of making the city affordable. We have 70,000 secondary suites in the city of Toronto, and we need every single one of them, everyone. These secondary suites, not only are they critical rental housing in our city, they're also located within neighborhoods. That means that in neighborhoods, in established neighborhoods, you have a range of incomes and people living there. Rental housing can't be and shouldn't just be building buildings on the avenues. And critically, our neighborhoods shouldn't just be property owners. You want that mix together. And so in a city that has a vacancy rate of 1%, when a healthy vacancy rate is 3%, what that means is we need to build 16,000 rental units, 16,000 new rental units, just to get to a healthy rate, just to make this city a little affordable. Why in the world would we risk losing a single rental unit when we need to be building more ones? And I'm sure, and I know, and I know in my ward, I've heard from many people, that there may be the odd person who owns a house that has a secondary unit that doesn't want to rent it long term, but we cannot open the door to risk losing those units, nor can we create an exemption process that would be able to enforce. So we can't do that. And so therefore, I support home sharing in primary residences. My motion strictly relates to ensuring compliance. There is nothing in there nefarious. I'm happy to answer any questions or walk you through it. It is about ensuring compliance. So that's it. I mean, what should guide us? To liveable city. And that means an affordable city, and that means regulating home sharing in a way that doesn't make the situation any worse. I strongly encourage you, strongly, to support Counselor Bilau's motion along with the committee recommendations, and I thank our staff in closing for all their work. It's been said often that Tracy, who gets all the credit, but her whole team, and they're all there, they get all the hard files, and they do, but this has been across departments with planning and others. I just want to close by once again thanking them for their hard work, along with the chairs of Planning and Growth and LNS, Counselor Palacio and Shiner. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cressy. Counselor Shiner.
Counselor Fragadakis.
Is Counselor Fragadakis ready? Okay, there we go.
So I have a motion, and if you put it on the screen, it's that in the event that Counselor 2A by Counselor Bilau carries that council prohibit the use of secondary suites for short-term rentals in wards 23 and 29, and originally, I was going to move it to exclude it in my ward, but Counselor Fillion asked me to include his ward because he's already spoken. And the reason that we do this is because rooming houses are actually prohibited in the former East York, and they're also prohibited in the former North York. And I know that we've had a rooming house consultation, and after that consultation, the residents in East York, by and large, said that they were interested in the status quo, that they didn't want the zoning bylaw change to permit rooming houses. And in effect, what motion 2A does is it allows for rooming houses for tourists in this city. So I've had a number of complaints from residents around what's been going on with these short-term rentals in my area, and it's been a point of aggravation with parties and such, and different people coming in at all days, at times of the day and night. Anyways, I know much has been said, and I actually don't want to reiterate, but I do also want to take this opportunity to thank Tracy, who seems to have received a lump of coal every Christmas since she's arrived to this position here at MLS, and I'm sorry for that. Chocolates are way better. But thank her and her staff, and actually thank the committee for all of their work on this file. And I actually do support the committee recommendations and don't support really any of the other amendments, but if Counselor Bilau's passes, I would like to have a bylaw that's in place that actually excludes wards 29 and Ward 23.
Counselor Kerjanis, you have a question, clarification?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I was wondering if I can ask my colleague through you, does that mean that if you want an exclusion, particularly for your ward?
That's right, that's what this is.
So using that terminology, if I was to say, I don't want in Ward 39 Airbnb, would you support that?
Well, you're not on this motion, but if you wanted to...
But if I was to put a motion in?
If you wanted to exclude yourself from the use of secondary suites for short-term rentals in your ward, I would support you.
You're saying the same terminology of an exclusion. If I was to say in Ward 39...
You're supposed to actually ask me for clarification of this, and I'm clarifying this.
I'm asking you specifically, on your motion, you want an exclusion. So my question...
Counselor, if you want to add your name on, she's answered the question. Counselor Fragadakis has answered the question.
If you want to be excluded, then I can certainly amend mine to include, I'm not sure what your ward is, Ward 39?
Okay.
I'm happy to add it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor, oh, okay.
Sorry.
Question, Counselor Mamalidi, clarification of a motion?
Sorry. Your motion says tenants can rent out in the rest of the city except Ward 29 and Ward 23?
No, that's not what my motion says. That's not what it says.
Short-term rentals?
What it says is that in the event that Counselor Bilau's motion, 2A, carries that council prohibit the use of secondary suites for short-term rentals in wards 23 and 29, where in actual fact, we do not, in the former East York and in the former North York, permit rooming houses. So in effect, what could be created as a result of 2A is rooming houses for visitors to this city. So if we don't permit rooming houses in the former East York and in the former North York for residents of this city, I don't want to create a situation where we're actually going to be creating rooming houses for visitors to this city.
So that brings up a whole other equation, because if you're reading...
But your question has to actually relate to my motion.
I know, but if you're reading into this, what you're saying is that this creates rooming houses with a different identity in the rest of the city.
But that's if Counselor Bilau's motion passes, so if you don't want to do...
So maybe you could say it a little louder, so people will know what your definition of Counselor Bilau's motion might do to the rest of the city. Or you'd be willing to...
I think I already have.
So in doing that, your motion says, I'm going to take care of my own ward, so Counselor Bilau's motion doesn't affect my ward?
And wards 23, and perhaps Ward 39, though I'm not quite sure at the moment.
Can you add, in a friendly amendment, Ward 7 to that? Sure? Throw it all in there. Put it all in the soup.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think we're just getting a little bit, we're off topic here. Okay, point of order, Counselor Grimes.
Speaker, can we maybe possibly get a comment from our solicitor if we can do this? Can we, are we allowed, can we be doing, taking wards out? Can we maybe get a comment?
Yeah, I'll get, I'll...
I don't know. I mean, this is a question...
No, I...
Okay. Okay, I will get advice, Counselor Grimes, but right now, we have other questioners. It's Counselor Shiner, you want clarification?
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Fragadakis, is it the intent of your motion, then, to stop rooming houses and the use of these premises like that? Is that what you're trying to do? Because I heard you refer to it, and I ask that in the nature that the staff have told us that short-term rentals of, or rentals of 29 days or more are legal across the city, and they aren't covered under these regulations. So these regulations are only covering rentals of less than 28 days. So I'm trying to understand the intention for clarification of your motion. I can't give you a microphone. If the chair was, it would be okay. Madam Chair? Madam Speaker? Counselor, could you give my colleague her microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Because I had one, too.
Thank you. So Counselor Shiner, as I'm sure you're aware, rooming houses are not permitted in the former borough of East York. They are also not permitted in the former North York. So my motion doesn't create that, because that is already a pre-existing condition. What I'm saying is that, how I interpret a motion 2A, it actually creates the ability to have rooming houses for tourists to this city. And so having said that, since rooming houses are not permitted in former North York and former East York, I would like to exclude wards 29 and 23. Counselor Fillion asked me to include him in my motion, so I did, because he'd already spoken and couldn't amend mine. So that's all that my motion is doing. I'm not creating the rooming house bylaw. That already exists before my time.
Well, my second question, then, through you, Madam Speaker, and my colleague may not be able to explain it, but we are changing ward boundaries. So I'm trying to understand how this can get implemented as of the end of the next year, when Ward 23 will be completely different, and Ward 29 will be different. So, and if you can't, maybe you can help, maybe the speaker can get that explanation out.
Okay, I just want to mention to counselors, I'm going to, I'm getting some advice here. I may rule that motion out of order, so let's, okay? I may rule that motion out of order. So I'm getting some advice from the staff, okay? Okay, Counselor Shiner.
Well, don't get mad at me, because you cut me off. You set off my mic, turn off the tone.
You've got 30 seconds, 30 seconds left.
Right.
30 seconds.
I did, and I was very polite about everything. So then, Madam Speaker, if you're going to get that ruling, then, and you don't rule it out of order, then would you help us understand how it might be impacted by the ward boundary changes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so until I make a ruling, there's, when I'm asking any further questions, Counsel Judge Mary?
You, yes, Speaker, I'd like to ask Counselor Fragadakis to include my ward as a friendly amendment, Ward 9.
Okay, sorry, so wards 39, 9, sorry, what, wards 1?
Counselor Davis. Counselor Davis, did you have a question to Counselor Fragadakis?
What number?
I am really struggling to understand the intent of your motion. So you think that the basements in East York will become rooming houses? As I read Counselor Bilau's... As I read Counselor Bilau's motion, which is actually, the way I read it, says to be amended to require that a secondary suite can be used as a short-term rental if it is exclusively and separately occupied as a principal residence. So you could live on the first floor of your house, rent out your basement as apartment, your tenant could actually then rent out rooms in their basement apartment, you could then rent out rooms in your portion of the house, and then you would start to have multiple units. So if you had six people now living in the house, which is one structure, you now have a rooming house for visitors. So the-
So I would, back to my motion-
The rationale that you used-
Sorry, sorry, back to my motion, Counselor Davis. It's to exclude wards 23 and 29, and I have now a running list of other people that would like to be in it.
I understand, and the rationale you gave was that-
Okay, Counselor Davis.
I'm asking a question, Speaker-
No, no, I understand, but I mentioned earlier, and to Counselor Burnside, I'm going to make a ruling on this, so do you want to wait until I make a ruling?
Well, I just wanted to ask-
I mean, because we're just asking the same questions.
No, this is different.
So-
I, it's just that Counselor Fragadakis used the rationale that East York does not have-
Does not permit rooming houses in the bylaw.
However, 1/3 of Ward 29 is former Toronto, and it does. So your ward has former Toronto in it, as does mine. Aren't you aware of that?
Right, and I'm going to work that out where it applies, where-
I'm going to stop everything until I make a ruling, please. Counselor Shiner to speak. Counselor Shiner to speak.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Sorry, if I could, give a little, Madam Speaker, Counselor Perks, if I could for a minute. Counselor Carroll.
Counselor Carroll, please.
Just checking the news, just checking the news.
Counselor Shan.
Anything in particular?
Okay, Counselor Shiner.
Counselor Pasternak, if I could. Madam Speaker, I questioned my colleague, Counselor Bilau, on her motion, and I know it was, I think, with good intentions, but I cannot support her most recent amendment, and partly because of what my colleague, Counselor Fragadakis, has said, and my own concerns.
You have a motion?
Oh, I have two motions. Please put them up, and then I'll speak to them after. One motion is to, and I'll talk to them after, but at least they're-
Well, you're supposed to introduce and speak to them at the beginning.
I like to introduce my motions. One's to allow 90 days of a secondary suite, and the other one is to have consultation. And then I'll speak to them as I go on. I can't see, if you're, the motion itself now does create a fact where all the upstairs rooms and all the downstairs rooms in a home could now be rented out, and that home could end up being, in my opinion, a rooming house. I think that's absolutely right. The worst part about it with Counselor Bilau's intention to help is that it puts that control in the hands of the tenant. So you can have a tenant in the property that decides they're going to be there for a month and go away for a whole period of time, and they put it on Airbnb, and you don't know who's in the basement. Now, when a residential community like Willowdale, where I had a home for many years, and my kids played in the backyard, and we had a gate with my neighbor, they went back and forth, I want to know who lives next door. I want to know who's occupying the basement apartment if they had it. I don't want it changing twice a week, weekends, whenever it may be. I don't want someone out there having loud parties in the backyard because the landlord's gone, or even if the owner's there can't control it because the tenant's in control. The homeowner or property owner should be in control. And the problem, thank you, Counselor Perks, the second problem comes in with, when you start to have a problem with a tenant in your house, you don't have a lot of control. Once they've rented it, you fall under the Residential Tenancies Act, you're in the tribunal, it's an uphill battle for a landlord, and if you're a simple homeowner and trying to go there, it, you're facing mountains to get into that. So not all areas of the city are the same, and I don't think you can put that justification in. So my first motion says, well, if you can do it part-time as a tenant, let's just say 90 days, not 180, but the second suite can be rented 90 days. That won't make up for your income for a whole year, it won't replace what you could get if you wanted to make it permanent, but I think it's a better solution than saying the tenant can rent it, because now I have nobody to go back to if I'm a neighbor and I have a problem. 90 days is on the floor. If you like it, you vote for it. If you don't, you won't. I think it's a reasonable compromise. The second motion I had was to look further and to meet with those folks that are in the business of short-term rental, every six months over the next two years, to talk about what's happening, how it's working, how it's not working, because guess what? Our staff have an understanding, and the people running it are the experts, and this economy is changing, and the world is changing. Because it used to be a basement apartment or a second suite could be advertised in the newspaper, and you had to read it, but now you can advertise it online, and it's read around the world. You don't know who's coming, you don't know who's there, you don't know what controls are. So if we're going to be, and we are entering that new economy, you should do it in partnership with the people that are actually facilitating it to go forward. And to do that, you should talk with them, because they'll tell you the other good operators that are working with them, and they may tell you the operators that aren't working with them, and they may tell you how you could actually control those other operators, because that's their competition, that's their business. So I supported at committee the amendment to not allow secondary suites for the justification that my colleague had, and I thought that that was reasonable to do in the first period of time, and I would still support that. I will not support her amendment today to allow tenants to control the house next door. I will tell you from the staff information, 75% of all rentals are condominiums anyways, so you're talking 25% of the housing are other homes within the city, so even the issue about the secondary suites isn't as big as people might make it to be. But I'll support that and look at it in a two-year review. But if the amendment carries to facilitate the rental by tenants, I can't, and hence I put the issue down there to say, let's deal with it for a period of, let's do that and look at the review in 90, in two years, let's work with the organizations that are there, or else let's just allow it for 90 days as a maximum in secondary suites.
Thank, thank you. We do have a question for you, Counselor Cressy. Clarification of the motion?
Just, just very quickly, so for clarification, so the committee recommended against secondary suites, and your motion would permit them for up to 90 days, is that right?
Rental up to 90, not the 180.
Did you, when I asked staff about this, staff told me that they could not enforce this. Did you check with staff to see if they could enforce this?
My belief is if they can enforce 180, they can enforce 90. Otherwise, they can't enforce 180.
So, but did you, did you check with staff? I understand your opinion, I'm asking, did you check with staff to see if they could enforce two different timelines? Did you check with staff?
It's two different products, so that's not clarification of my motion. That's what I did or didn't do. I'm telling you.
That's fair. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Members of the council, before, before, before the mayor speaks, I just want to comment on, and Counselor Grimes, you got up on a point of order, so I just wanted to comment on Counselor Fragadakis's motion. So in fact, legally, the motion is in order, but the chief planner is recommending against it, because planning does not recommend ward-based zoning, so he would not recommend it. So that, those, that's my comment. Mayor Torrey to speak.
Point of order, please.
Okay, Counselor Mamalidi.
Look, I, I, I know that we've had a long day, however, what this does, Counselor Fragadakis's awareness in this particular sense raises a legal issue, and I'd like to know from our solicitor whether or not Counselor Fragadakis is right, and inadvertently, perhaps, Counselor Bilau's motion is opening this up to a different interpretation on rooming houses, and I'd like the solicitor to tell us before we vote, if that's okay. And I think most, most of us would want that.
We've already had questions. We are now at the last speaker, all the que, no, no, we're at the last speaker, we're at the last speaker. You've been here all day, you could have asked the solicitor. Mayor Torrey, Mayor Tor, Mayor Tor.
Challenge the chair. No, it's not, it's not a challenge.
Count, it's not, yeah, there's nothing to challenge. Counselor Shiner?
Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
Counselor Shiner?
I challenge the chair.
But Counselor Mamalidi, what I said is that you can't ask questions-
You can't dismiss me.
Okay.
You said no, so I'm challenging you.
Okay. Counselor Mamalidi, I just want to point out that we asked questions this morning, all the questions were asked, and if there were any doubt-
There's new information, legal information. There's legal information.
We don't ask questions to staff. Okay, Counselor Mamalidi's challenging the chair. Recorded vote. Recorded, a recorded vote.
No, 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 no. On a point of order.
He, he's challenging me. Counselor Perks.
On a point of order, Speaker, there are rulings that you make that are challengeable, but changes to the procedure bylaw are not, are not something that can be challenged. He is, it is, it is, you're just interpreting the procedure bylaw, you are not making a ruling, this is not something that's challengeable. Actually, it's written in the procedure bylaw, Counselor Mamalidi, you might want to look it up.
I'm challenging.
I didn't debate, I rose on a point of order. Pay attention.
No, I haven't. Let's just say you, you-
Your mic is on. Your mic is on.
Note all the stickies.
So my, my, my comment that I made earlier stands.
Right.
Okay, there's no challenge. Counselor Mamalidi can't challenge me. The clerk, the clerk was a little confused on what Counselor Mamalidi was challenging me on. Okay, so let's continue. Counselor Fragadakis.
On a point of order-
Yes.
I've been advised by clerks that I've, I need to amend my motion to include not, other than wards 23 and 29, at the request of members of council, wards 39, 7, 9, 1, 10, 12, 24, and 34. I'm not sure if that's inclusive, all-inclusive, but that is what, the list that I have, and I'm putting that on the floor to revise my motion.
Point of privilege, Counselor Shiner.
Yes, I am still standing. Madam Speaker, your comment before about what the staff said, whether something is in order or not, and then their perspective on it, is completely wrong. If, it is wrong, because you can rule whether something is in order or not, you cannot be making comments on them unless you wish to be a speaker and put your name on the list. But it is my privilege simply to have a ruling, not to have a commentary. And you gave us a commentary, and it's not staff that decide, it's council, and that is not right.
Counselor Shiner, I did not rule Counselor Fragadakis's motion out of order.
No, but you said it may not be out of order, but staff said you shouldn't support it. That is not your privilege to do.
That's the deep state at work.
That's not what I said. What I said is that the chief planner does not recommend it.
And he's staff. That's the difference. It's not time to, if you say what he's recommending, then Counselor Mamalidi has the right to ask staff questions, because now you're bringing their thoughts back to the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Shiner.
Do I still like to ask staff questions?
No, Counselor Mamalidi, we've already-
I think it's within my rights to.
Okay. I've called the 10-minute recess. Call the meeting to order. Mayor Tory to speak. Counselor Mamalidi.
On a point of privilege-- On a point of privilege, and I hope you allow me to finish my sentence. I believe that, as a member, I wasn't heard properly earlier. There has been, in my opinion, a legal interpretation of a motion that was passed recently before the discussions with staff on this issue. I'd asked, given that Counselor Fragadakis's motion has caused questions about legal interpretation on rooming houses, and whether or not a motion has been introduced that will inadvertently allow rooming houses all over the city, that we ask the solicitor whether, in fact, that's the case. You have ruled me out of order with respect to that, and I still maintain that it's my right, given the fact that there's a motion that's been introduced that might allow this to happen in the city, to ask the solicitor that question.
And Counselor Mamalidi, I have commented. Thank you.
And I will try and challenge the chair.
There's no challenge, Counselor Mamalidi.
I'm asking for the solicitor.
No, no. I'm sorry.
Well, it's in the procedure--
It's in the procedure by law, and I suggest that you read the procedure by law. Mayor Tory to speak.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, earlier on, Counselor Carroll made the suggestion that this debate was acrimonious, and I'd somehow be concerned about that. And it was going along, actually, I thought quite, well, there's a difference of opinion in the room on one issue in particular. But I will say, the last few minutes, unfortunately, have been, I think, disappointing in terms of the tone in the room. And I certainly think we have to be careful about, you know, starting into the notion that we're going to have motions and decisions taken that sort of start to have Balkanized, you know, policies across the city, and people are going to start excluding themselves. I realize we have some historical artifacts that exist in that area, but I think we're trying to go the way of fixing those as opposed to having more areas. But I'll speak to the issue at hand now, Madam Speaker. You know, if our objective here is to have a livable, balanced, affordable city in which all interests are taken into account, then I think you-- Yes, of course, you can start from the principle, and I'm very sympathetic to it, that people should generally be allowed to do with their property what they wish and how they see fit. But I think we've also readily accepted the principle in this place, and I think the people do too, that it is our responsibility to place reasonable limitations on that, especially, you know, because we are a community. And so, for example, and it was-- You know, I was thinking to myself, Counselor Carroll used the example of a brothel that you couldn't organize under the law and use your property that way. I had chosen in my own notes I wrote this morning before she said that to refer to an amusement park, and said you couldn't put that in your backyard, and somebody might want to analyze that one day. But the bottom line is, even though it's your property, you can neither operate a brothel nor an amusement park and just say, well, that's my property, I'm going to do that. And you can't just add a story at will to your house because you need the space without going through a regulatory process, even though it's your house. And so, to me, I mean, this is-- People will say, well, the business of short-term rentals is different because it's all happening kind of inside the house, as it were. Well, that's true theoretically, but I guess I've been now, as the mayor, and others have as well, because I heard specific references to specific places, but I've been to places I was asked to come to see the disruption that is going on because of absentee landlords, absentee owners who are using these houses for Airbnb and similar short-term rental arrangements, and that it's causing huge disruption that is not within the character of those neighborhoods and is causing a lot of grief for a lot of people. And so, the need, to me, for us to act in principle and do something and bring forward, and I do thank our staff very much for all of their work on this, was something that I was very comfortable with. And I think that the notion that we could just leave things alone was not really viable. So, as is often the case, we're confronted with the challenge of finding something in between two poles. The one pole saying, let's just do nothing and leave it alone, and there hasn't been much talk of that. And the other pole being, let's just ban this altogether and not have any kind of short-term rentals at all. And so, what our staff have tried to come up with, and I think we've been working through today, trying to find something that fits into a middle ground that will acknowledge what Counselor Holland said, which is the reality, that both technology and just people's way of life as it were. Years ago, I think if I'd asked my parents if they'd ever even thought of renting out, you know, sort of, they would have said, well, I don't want a stranger coming into my house. I think a lot of people felt that way. Now, we're, you know, easier about that and just say, sure, why not? And it's sometimes for financial and sometimes for other reasons. I should say, by the way, as a sidebar, that I don't think in any way that the notion that I'm about to get to here, which is secondary suites, diminishes the rights of owners at all. Owners are the ones that lease a space to tenants, and the landlord ultimately is the one that sets the terms of the lease, and if they don't want it to happen, then it won't happen, in the context of them just saying it can't happen. So here we are with this choice, and I think, just as we said yesterday with regard to shelters, the challenge for us is to do the right thing the right way. I can't in conscience, as much as I've heard all the different arguments, at this point in time, with the shortage we have of affordable rental housing, with the vacancy rate we know we have, with the very discussion we had yesterday about the reason for our shelters being overcapacity is because there isn't affordable housing for people to go to, I don't know how I can sit here and sort of say, well, as we just spent a whole year for the first time achieving our target and exceeding it in terms of affordable housing that gets approved, then having housing leak out the bottom of the bucket, you know, because we're going to say that we're going to let people rent these on a short-term basis. I think we have to do everything we responsibly can do for now to say that, right now, if you look at the public interest, and our job is to serve the overall public interest, it is in maintaining as much housing as possible for, I'll call it, permanent tenants or tenants who are living there as opposed to short-term tenants. And I'm sorry that that means some people will be disappointed by that, but that's our job. And the second thing that I just wanted to comment on is that I'm very comfortable with these regulations in the context of fairness. It's been little talked about. But, you know, we have hotels, and they're huge contributors to the success of our city on tourism, on taxes they pay, rules they have to follow, and they're-- You know, they have a difficult challenge in front of them. And I think that what we're doing here is putting a framework in place that will allow for preservation of rental stock, permission for many, many people who wish to do so to have short-term rentals in their home and use their property in that manner, a requirement that it be not absentee landlords, which I think will help with that situation I've seen in the places I've been asked to go, and promote fair competition as between the different people who want to offer services to those who want to come and stay here. And so, those are my comments, but I think on the principal issue of the day, which is the issue that has to do with secondary suites, I will be supportive of excluding them from the standpoint of the owner of the house not being able to use those to rent out separately. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, so we will be dealing with-- Yeah. Planning, I believe, planning and growth motions first. Oh, Counselor Grimes, did you have a point of order?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Counselor DeChanel, that is, kids' Christmas concert, and he's asked if Ward 5 could be added to Counselor Fragadakis's motion. He just called me and asked if it could be added, so-- Add it.
Okay, planning and-- We're doing planning and growth first, right?
It's going to go on the screen.
Okay, it's going to be on the screen. Okay. That's the order. I guess, yeah. Well, we ha-- I guess-- Can I put the motions on the screen? Counselor Fragadakis?
Sorry, on a point of order, Counselor Grimes has just informed me that he'd like to have his ward included in my motion eight.
Okay. I'm sorry, but we've already got all the motions, and we're ready to vote, so we can't amend the motions. Sorry. We're in the middle of votes. We can't amend motions. Okay, do we want to put the first motion on the screen, please? Our first motion is motion number 2A by Counselor Bylaw. Recorded vote.
Counselor Palacio, please. The motion carries 27 to 17.
Next motion is revised by Counselor Fragadakis. Recorded vote. We're in the middle of a vote, Counselor Fragadakis.
Counselor Grimes is in the middle of a vote.
Yeah. Counselor Fragadakis, I've already mentioned, we've already had the motions. Recorded vote.
Counselor Kelly, please.
Counselor Palacio. Counselor Mehavik, please. The motion does not carry. The vote is 16 to 28.
Motion 3 by Counselor Crawford is redundant. And 9A by Counselor Shiner is redundant. So our motion 2B by Counselor Bylaw. Recorded vote.
The motion carries 35 to 9.
Motion 5 by Counselor Fletcher. Recorded vote.
Counselor Chisanti, please.
Motion 5 carries 42 to 2.
Motion 9B? Oh, sorry, yes, it is. Yeah. Okay, item is amended. Recorded vote. It's on the licensing and standards.
Deputy Mayor Minimon, please. Counselor Carmichael Greb. Counselor McMahon, please.
Counselor Mehavik and Counselor Palacio, please.
The item is amended. Carries 36 to 8.
Okay, so now we'll go to licensing and standards. Our first motion is motion number 1 by Counselor Palacio. Recorded vote.
Counselor Cole and Counselor Mehavik, please. Counselor Carmichael Greb. Counselor McMahon. And Counselor Perutz, please.
The motion carries 43 to 1. The motion carries forty-three to one.
Motion is four A by Counselor Kerjianis, and recommendation two is now redundant, so we're voting on the remainder of his motion. Yes, that's why I'm sa, that's why I said, yeah. Okay. Who asked for a separate vote? Okay, Counselor, Counselor Holliday's asked for a separate vote, so. Okay, so do you want to vote on item three first?
Counselor Perutza, Counselor DiGiorgio. Counselor Wong Tam, please.
Counselor Mamalidi, Counselor Crisanti, Counselor Fragadakis, please. Counselor Fragadakis, may we have your vote, please?
Counselor Wong Tam, thank you.
Part three of the motion does not carry. The vote is eleven to thirty-three.
Okay, so on the remainder of the motion, record, yeah, excluding part two.
Counselor Lee, please. Counselor Perutza, Counselor DiGiorgio.
Everybody thank Chad. I'm asleep.
The vote on parts one and four to six does not carry. The votes are ten to thirty-four.
Motion four B by Counselor Kerjianis.
Motion four B carries thirty-two to eleven.
Motion seven by Counselor Cressy.
Counselor Perks, please. Counselor Lee. Counselor Perutza.
Counselor Fragadakis and Counselor Grimes, please.
Counselor Pasternak, please, and Counselor Carmichael Greb.
Motion seven carries thirty-six to seven.
Motion six by Counselor Ford.
The motion carries unanimously forty-three in favor.
Motion, motion nine B by Counselor Shiner.
Counselor Kelly, please. Counselor Perks. Counselor Perutza, Counselor DiGiorgio, Counselor McMahon.
Counselor Holland and Counselor Crisanti, please.
Counselor Thompson, please, and Counselor Perutza.
Motion nine B does not carry. The vote is eighteen to twenty-five.
Item is amended.
Counselor Lee, please, and thank you.
The item is amended, carries forty to three.
Okay, thank you. We're recessed to six-thirty. This is a long, difficult debate, and I just want to thank you for exercising patience and very good judgment during this debate. Thank you very much. Thank you. Recessed to six-thirty.
If I can have members of council come to the council chambers, please. Okay, members of council, we do have form. We have forty-nine items left to go. And tomorrow, we have to, we have to recess at three-thirty. So if we don't get the agenda completed, there may be a possibility we might have to come back next week. So I just want to remind members of council that even if you have five minutes to speak, maybe you don't have to speak for five minutes, and maybe we can get the items dealt with. Counselor Ford?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just rising to see if I can place a procedural motion at this moment, or do we need two-thirds to limit, to limit speaking to three minutes for the rest of the evening?
We need two-thirds.
Can we do quick items?
Okay, well, just a sec. Let me start, okay? I'm just, meetings resumed, okay? We're all here. Are there any, are there any release of member hold? Please put your name up, request to question staff. Counselor Kerjanis?
Yes, Madam Speaker. PW twenty-four point three.
She meant that seriously.
Utility Locate Services For Business Improvement Areas As Required By The Ontario Underground Infrastructure Indification Act. I did have a motion. If we can put it up, please. Okay, I'll keep holding. Number two, Madam Speaker. PW twenty-four point four, Improving Accountability In The Utility Cut Process. I'm holding this. I'd like to release it to Counselor Kristin Wong-Tam. And I do have another one, Madam Speaker. Page five, EX twenty-nine point three-one. Street Event User Fees For Business Improvement Areas. My questions have been answered. I'd like to release it, please.
Okay, just one sec, please, Counselor. On page five?
Yes, ma'am. EX twenty-nine point three-one.
That's already been done. You, you released-
Oh, sorry, Madam Speaker. I'm sorry. Sorry, there's another one. Sorry, there's another one on page seven. PW twenty-five point seven, Cost Sharing Agreement For Steele's Avenue, East Kennedy Road To Ninth Line. And I'd like to move staff recommendations.
Okay, on page seven, PW twenty-five point seven. Counselor Kerjanis is releasing. On favor, Kerry? Now, Counselor Wong-Tam, is the PW twenty-four point four, is that a quick item?
I believe it is, Madam Speaker. This motion was circulated for three days at the last council meeting, and the clerks can probably put it back up on the screen.
Not quick.
Okay, not a problem. I do, I will continue to hold it, and, Madam Speaker, I do have a, I do have another item that I can release now. And that is on page eight, Madam Speaker, T twenty-eight point eleven, sixty-six Wellesley Street East and five five-
Motion to-
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry, Counselor Wong-Tam. On page eight, T twenty-eight eleven?
That's correct, Madam Speaker, and I'll read the title into the public records. Sixty-six Wellesley Street East And five five two to five seventy Church Street And City-Owned Public Laneway Official Plan And Zoning Amendment And Rental Housing Demolition Applications Refusal Report. I would be moving the recommendations in the supplementary report.
Okay, on page eight, T- Yes, so it's just the item, P, T twenty-eight eleven, on favor? Recorded? Okay, recorded vote.
Counselor Kerjanis, please.
Counselor Campbell, please.
The item is adopted unanimously, thirty-two in favor.
Counselor Davis?
Okay. Hold on. The first is on page three. PG twenty-three point nine, Toronto Green Standard Review And Update. And I have a motion. I've worked with staff in planning. The Chair of the Committee is fine with it. I consulted with David. There are three amendments that are being moved by three different people that I think could go, put it to bed. Counselor Robinson, Counselor Layton, oh, Counselor DeBaer-Maker has one, and I have one.
But Counselor Robinson isn't here. Oh, no, you're here. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't see you. Okay.
So I would release it now if all four of those, three or four of those motions could be voted on quickly.
Okay, so, Counselor Robinson, yours first?
Okay, my motion is before you. If you have it up on the screen. What page? Counselor Davis said the page.
Page three.
I'm just moving my motion, which is, the staff do have it. It has been prepared by, it has been prepared by staff, planners, lawyers, everyone. And this is it. And it's just about EVs and trying to take it to a new level. But prior to doing that, staff feel most comfortable by making sure we have due process by consulting. And just, if you didn't know, Volvo will be stop building gas engines by 2019, so we have to look at hybrid and electric because that's the way forward. So this is the intent behind my motion, is to be proactive.
Okay, so that's one of the amendments by Counselor Robinson. That's on page three, PG twenty-three point nine, Toronto Green Standard Review.
I have already, I met with them on Monday.
Okay, now Counselor Layton, yours?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. This is to request a report back after two years on changing the Tier Two standard, not, not advancing it to be more, or be, require greater efficiency. But right now, we allow for two things. This would be to say only one.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna have to stand this down because the staff want an opportunity to speak to the members on the motions.
Which staff? Staff wrote this?
Clerk's staff.
Oh, okay, happy to. Clerks have this, though.
So we'll hold it down. Okay, that's it. Pardon? All right, so Counselor Ainsley, you're next. Oh, Counselor Davis, yes?
Counselor Audgemary is going to take the hold for me, which is on page three. ST fourteen point eleven. Council Member Appointment To The Toronto And Region Conservation Authority Regional Watershed Alliance. And I know that, oh, Counselor Lee is here now. Counselor Lee has the motion. Yes.
Counselor DeBaer-Maker wants to hold it.
Oh, then I'll maintain the hold, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Ainsley, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page five, under Community Development Recreation Committee Meeting Number twenty-four, or, sorry, further down the page, Economic Development Committee Meeting Number twenty-five. ED twenty-five point four, Advancing Broadband Infrastructure And Internet Connectivity. I have my questions answered by staff, and I can release that.
Okay, on page five, ED twenty, pardon? Okay, recorded vote on twenty-five point four.
Counselor Carol, please.
Counselor Mahavik, thank you. Counselor Birdside, when you're seated, please.
Counselor Carol, we need your vote, please.
The item is adopted unanimously, thirty-five in favor.
Counselor Fletcher?
Yes, thank you. Page six, Speaker. Planning And Growth Management Committee, PG twenty-four point one, Unilever Precinct Planning Study And East Harbour Application Review Update. I'll release that and ask for recorded vote.
Okay, on page six, PG twenty-four point one, recorded vote. Counselor Fletcher is releasing.
Look at how pretty my buttons are, Vin.
Counselor Crawford, Counselor Fillion, Counselor Mahavik, please.
Counselor Lee, please. Counselor Lee?
The item is adopted unanimously, thirty-six in favor.
Counselor Shiner?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I now have to find the page again, so my apologies.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I now have to find the page again, so my apologies. It is page eight of the pink sheets, North York Community Council Item NY 26.4, Request for Direction Report, Official Plan Amendment, Zoning Amendment and Site Plan Application, 625 to 627 Shepherd Avenue East.
Okay, which, there is nothing, there is nothing on page eight on that. Oh, on page, oh, sorry.
Well, there is on mine.
NY, NY 26.4, sorry, yep.
I read it all out so you could find it. I am moving the Request for Direction Report and the Staff Recommendations.
On page eight, Counselor Shiner, 26.4, on favor? Recorded vote.
Counsel D'Georgio, please. Counselor Shiner, please. Counsel Shan, Counselor Davis.
Counsel Cole, Counsel Mahavik, and Counsel Crawford, please.
Counsel Malo, please.
Counsel Cole, please, thank you.
The motion carries unanimously, 39 in favor.
Pardon? Yeah, item is amended, on favor, carried. Counsel Mahavik, your name is there, did you have something?
On page four, EX 29.12, Teal Prosperity Power Reduction Strategy 2017 Report and 2018 Work Plan, I wanted to give a passionate speech on how important it was and all of that, but then Maria convinced me by saying, forget about it. So I'll just say that, that 2018 will be spent in, okay.
On favor?
No, 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 there's someone else.
Oh, they want to hold it.
You might have to hear that impassioned speech.
All right, okay. Counselor DeBaer-Maker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Counselor Davis was holding on page three, I'm sorry, PG 23.9, Toronto Green Standard Review, I think she was moving her motion, and Counsel Robinson moved her. Counselor Layton and I had different motions, but the clerk has advised us to combine them to make it more procedurally correct, no clerk, sorry, planning staff advised us to do it this way, so we have that motion, Counselor Layton doesn't need to move his motion because it's embedded in my motion, Counselor Shiner, and we've all agreed that this basically adopts the green standard, asks staff to look at both the bird collision deterrent section and the energy efficiency section, and report back in the spring. So, so if everybody else's motion is on the table, then they can all go for it at once if Counselor Davis is comfortable with that.
Are we, are we comfortable with that, Counselor Davis?
Mine is not on the table yet. It hasn't been placed. I just have to place it.
Okay, it's there.
Okay, we directed staff to do this in 2015, and it hasn't been done, and I'm simply reiterating a report request to be brought forward next year, and I've consulted with everyone involved.
Okay, so we'll vote on Counselor Davis's motion first? Right? On favor? Carried. Recorded.
Counselor Davis.
Counselor Mahavik, please.
The motion carries 34 to 4.
Okay, so the next motion is Counselor DeBaer-Maker. Do we need a recorded vote on this, too? On favor? Carried. Counselor Robinson's motion? On favor? Recorded.
Counsel Mahavik and Counsel Cole, please.
The motion carries unanimously, 39 in favor.
Item is amended, on favor, carried. Counsel Cressy?
Thank you, Speaker, on page nine, item CC 35.7, 820 Widmer Street, Zoning Amendment Application, Request for Direction, I can release that, thank you.
So on page nine, CC 35.7, Counsel Cressy is releasing, on favor, carried. Okay. Yeah, okay, just, just one sec. Counselor Davis?
I have, I could attempt to release all, the four traffic signals.
Well, there is one in Counsel Palacio's ward, and he's not here, and he's asked me...
Oh, he wants to do that.
He's asked me that if you're gonna deal with it, that you wait till tomorrow.
Yes, I'm happy to do that, which one is it, EY 26.25?
Yeah.
I could leave that off, then. What I attempted to do, to make sure, over the years, sometimes we approve these traffic signals...
Counsel Davis, it doesn't sound like it's a quick item, so...
It's quick. And it, it, they get pushed, they get pushed into the next year, and sometimes into the following year, and we find ourselves, there have, in previous years, not been sufficient budget, this simply says, and I've worked with Ms. Gray, and she's satisfied with it, I was attempting to move, that we identify within the 2018 budget process, budget, sufficient funding to ensure the traffic control signals approved in 2017 can be designed and installed in 2018. So, it, no, it is in the budget.
It's not, it's not a quick item, Counselor Davis.
Okay.
All right, so Counsel, yeah, okay, it's not, okay, yes, yes. Counsel Ford, you stood up. Oh, you have a point of order? Counsel DeBaer-Maker?
Thank you, Madam Chair, while Counselor Davis was moving a motion, I believe that she was actually releasing traffic studies, and I don't think the motion relates to the traffic studies, I think that might be a motion to take the Budget Committee, so I would still think Counselor Davis could release the traffic studies.
Yeah. Okay, Counsel DeBaer-Maker?
That's my point of order.
Yeah, Counsel DeBaer-Maker, you're absolutely correct, the thing is, is that Counselor Davis just got up, she did not give the motion to city staff.
She did, but we haven't signed.
Yeah, we haven't signed off on it, so I can't rule on it until we get a copy of it, okay? Counsel Ford, did you have a point of order?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to place a procedural motion that, for the rest of the evening, speech has been limited to three minutes.
Okay, there's a motion by Counsel Ford for the rest of the evening, that's a speaking, be for three minutes rather than five, recorded vote. Recorded vote.
The motion does not carry, the vote is 23 to 15, the required two-thirds majority has not been achieved.
Maybe one minute will pass. Members? Okay, members, members, may I have your attention? Oh, Counsel Layton, you have a motion to introduce?
Oh, I do, yes, thank you very much, this is that, a motion to attend the Licensing Appeal Tribunal and to fight against the removal of conditions.
On favor? Carried. Okay, thank you. Okay, members, may I have your attention, please? All, please, I need everybody's attention on this. Although we have timed items, I must advise you that the chief planner has presented us with an interim control bylaw at this time. Under the council procedures, when the chief planner presents an interim control bylaw, city council deals with the matter immediately before any other business is conducted. We will now proceed to that debate and return to our timed items. Counsel Audgemary, you have a motion to introduce the report from the chief planner.
Thank you. So moved.
Okay, on favor? Carried.
Recorded, recorded.
You don't trust me, Anna.
Counsel Lee, please.
Counsel Mahavik, please.
All right, so do we have any debate on the item? Do we have questions, the staff? Counsel Ford, questions, the staff?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, through you to the chief planner, could he comment on the report that's just been given to council?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, happy to, the, Madam Speaker, the area is subject to an existing interim control bylaw, that has allowed staff to undertake a study of the official plan, firstly, for the area, which this council approved at its November meeting, so staff are continuing to review now the zoning bylaw, so the prohibition of these uses allows staff to complete that review, and it's an extension for one year, an additional year, on the interim control that was adopted by council last year at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Shiner?
To the chief planner, we've been working towards a resolution, am I correct, of the outstanding issues with the landowner there?
Yes, there are several, several landowners, yes, one of them was included in the official plan amendment, the resolution was included in the official plan when council adopted it.
Are we close to coming to an agreement, do you think?
I believe so. There are other lands where development is not proposed, but for that site, we are, yes.
So, the extension really gives us the opportunity to conclude the negotiations that we're having, and hopefully come to an agreement between ourselves and the landowners there that we can put forward, and we'll move at council, and they will be able to support.
Yes, among other matters, cleaning up the zoning bylaw, yes.
Okay, and without this, they can change their applications and end up making an appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board on the site?
As well, yes, as well, other uses may get developed with the existing zoning that are contrary to the official plan that council just developed.
Thank you.
Or approved, sorry.
Thank you. Counsel Pasternak?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, I'm, I'm just looking at the map before us, and was, is this amended interim control bylaw extended south of the subject property to the parking lots below Billy Bishop Way?
I believe, I'm informed that this is the same map that was with the original interim control bylaw, it's simply an extension of the interim control bylaw that council previously adopted.
Now, I, the original motion was to expire when?
The original motion would expire in January, it was originally adopted in January 2017, so it would expire at the end of the month, January 2018.
So this will go to January 19, January 2019?
It would, it would, yes, it would, well, it would go from one year from today.
And is, is all this time really needed to, to work out a settlement with the owners?
Likely not, but we have a council rising at the end of July, so this puts us in a position to get the work done before the expiry of the bylaw.
And if a settlement is reached, this can be removed?
Yes.
In advance of...
Yes, it would be, it would be replaced with a zoning bylaw that would come into force in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Campbell?
Just a quick question, is this, is this zoned as employment lands?
It is, under study, the, the official plan amendment that the city, city council just approved actually considers the area for mixed use, the, the zoning in the area is a mix of, of employment uses, it was a regeneration area in the new official plan, so it's...
So regeneration means pretty much anything goes?
We went, go through a secondary plan process, as we did.
Right.
And put in place a new framework for planning for a mixed-use community, a complete community in the area going forward.
So, and on the site, I mean, I'm not really that familiar with the area, I'm somewhat familiar, but on the area right now, is there, are there manufacturing and warehousing on the site now?
The site is comprised of a number of properties, some of the land is vacant, a number of vacant parcels, actually, surface parking lots, automotive dealership, storage, and one office building, one small office building.
Any, any warehousing and manufacturing?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So, okay, and, and the intent, then, would be to, we're in the process of formulating a secondary plan, or...
Well, no, council has, through you, Madam Chair, council has approved new official plan policies for the area, on one of the sites, which is currently vacant, a new combination mixed-use development that includes some employment use and residential use, is, as, as Counselor Shiner indicated, in the, in the works, and there is interest on other sites for other development.
Is there an application in for a development?
On one of the sites, yes, at 3621, 3625 Duffin Street, yes.
And how, how many units is that?
I don't have that information with me, it's a mixed-use development.
Mixed-use development. Is it primarily residential?
It includes, interestingly enough, some self-storage warehousing, as well as residential.
Self-storage doesn't sound like a lot of regeneration to me, but...
It doesn't sound like a lot of regeneration to me either.
No. And so the purpose of, of this is to, is to, is to work with existing landowners? Purpose of the, of the interim control bylaw?
Through you, Madam Speaker, the purpose of the interim control bylaw is to allow staff time to look at the use list that's currently in place, to ensure that the permitted uses align with the future vision of the area.
All right, thank you, thank you for the answers.
Thank you. To speak, Counsel Audgemary.
Very briefly, Speaker, I'm so excited about what's happening at Duffin and Wilson, and we look forward to a great partnership with businesses, new... and we look forward to a great partnership with businesses, new ones coming in. Staff have done a great deal of work on this, on this front, including economic development and planning and transportation. There's a good deal of support in the community for this regeneration for this area, which is just north of Yorkdale, but really, it couldn't be further apart, and it's been lying, the land has been lying moribund for, for decades. This regeneration project gives us the opportunity to really take off. It's already started. This will help push it over the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shiner?
So, Madam Speaker, I'm supportive of the continuation of the interim control bylaw. If you note on the front, what we're trying to prohibit happening is car washes, service centers, and other uses on there that don't create a complete community, and in fact, we designated this area a number of years ago as a regeneration area to bring life back into it. Staff have been working with some of the landowners there to fulfill that vision. If we don't have the interim control bylaw in place, then we face a lot of uphill battles. I think it's a wonderful area, one of seven that we established in the city's regeneration areas a number of years ago, and we should continue the hard work that has gone forward and support the staff recommendation on this, so my colleague, Counselor Audgemary, can come back and have a celebration of another new community opening up there in that area, because it is an area that life is coming back to, and it's no longer an area with desolate corn of the city. And that's very near to the shopping plaza that we recently had the pleasure of opening up, and much of the residential uses that are now on my colleague Counselor Pasternak's area. So I think it's, it's something we should all support.
I'd ask for a recorded vote.
Counselor Audgemary, you have a motion to introduce the bill. Oh, we have to adopt the item first. On favor of the item, recorded vote.
Counselor Pritzker, Counselor DeGiorgio, Counselor McMahon, Counselor Wong-Tam, please, and thank you. Counselor Perks, when you're seated. Counselor Davis, please.
Counselor Mahavik, please.
The item is adopted 37 to 1.
Counselor Audgemary, you have a motion to introduce the bill? Well, you should have.
Thank you. Let Lee be granted to introduce Bill 1462. Thank you.
Shall Lee be granted to introduce this bill? Recorded vote.
Counselor Wong-Tam, please. Counselor Layton, Counselor McMahon, Counselor Perks, please. Counselor Kelly?
Counselor Crawford, please. Counselor Chisanti, when you're seated, please.
The motion to introduce the bill carries unanimously 39 in favor.
Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw? Recorded vote.
Counselor Shiner, please. Counselor Layton, Counselor Wong-Tam, Counselor McMahon, Counselor Karagianis.
Mayor Torrey, please. Counselor Mahavik, please.
The motion to enact the bill carries unanimously 39 in favor.
Thank you. So we will now go to our timed item. Counselor Shiner, can?
Point of order, so it's a question of what comes next. We have a number of timed items today.
Oh, so, hold on. Counselor Layton, did you have, I see your name there.
I thought we were on the next item, so I just put my name down.
Okay, we, we have to...
Finger goes first, so...
Okay, we have to clear the screen, because that was for the item before. All right, okay. So Counselor Shiner?
I'm rising on a point of, I'd just like to know. We have a number of timed items today, and then we have timed items tomorrow morning. Is the intention, we go as far as we can tonight, and if we don't finish these timed items, they start tomorrow morning, and then the next items, or will we be dropping these and going to the items we set for the morning?
Well, I would think that we would, tomorrow morning, we would go to the timed item that we timed tomorrow.
And then not finish this?
No, could finish that after. Well, it's up to us to decide in the morning. Let's wait till the morning and see, see if...
We'll all have a clearer vision when the sun comes up in the morning.
Okay. Well, if, if we can start the items, maybe we can get some of it done. Okay, so on page four, timed item was EX 2918, 2919, and 2920. So we'll do 2918 first. Do we have questions? And Counselor Shiner has his name. I mean, Counselor Layton? Yes, Counselor Davis, you held the item, so do you, questions? We're going to questions to staff. Counselor Davis? She's not here. Counsel, oh, there you are, okay. Questions to staff? I don't, I don't control those mics. It's working now.
Okay. So, this, for Mr. DeGiorgiomo, I have a stack of books over there that are the five-year reporting of the wet weather flow plan that was started in 2003. Yes, and I had a chance to look again at the wet weather flow master plan, and these are the overall benefits. Are these the overall benefits of the 20-year, five-year plan? Are they still the same?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes. We reported this spring that the objectives and the, and the strategy remains the same.
Okay, clean beaches, getting rid of CSOs, stopping basement flooding, protecting the infrastructure, et cetera.
It remains the same.
Yes. The second thing I want to show is, this was out of the first five-year plan.
So I just want to point out that we have Anna White on the left here. Okay, Counselor Davis?
My time is going, my time is going. So this was the first five-year plan, but you and I spoke about this. There, these are the things that were supposed to have been done by 2020, excuse me, it's hard to hear, by 2027. I know there was stream restoration. You've had to do more stream restoration. A lot of that has been done, but these other pieces at the bottom, how much of the work that was supposed to have been done before 2007 has been done?
Through you, Madam Speaker, with respect to the ponds that you see at the bottom, about a third of that work has been completed, and about two-thirds of it have been deferred for a number of reasons, either environmental assessment reasons or complications with cash flow and, and reordering the priorities.
So how far behind are we in years on the wet weather flow plan?
Through you, Madam Speaker, with respect to the original plan as submitted, we are about 10 years behind on completing the wet weather flow components.
10 years behind. So at the Budget Committee, you were requested to submit a briefing note on how it might be expedited, the wet weather flow plan, particularly to proceed with the various components of it, but one of them you recommended that you could expedite is the Don River Central Waterfront Project, which is a, how many billion-dollar project?
Through you, Madam Speaker, the Don and Central Waterfront Project is estimated to be about $1.5 to $2 billion in costs.
And currently, that project will be done when?
At present forecasted time period is about 2035 to have it all completed.
And that 2035 completion, do you think that even that is an optimistic projection?
Through you, Madam Speaker, no, with respect to the 2035 date, we reviewed that with our project teams, and they're comfortable that that is doable.
Right.
The issue is on the financing front, so we had to match it with the financing that will come in over that time period.
Okay. So what we have here in the green, there are these little balls, some are orange, some are green. The green ones are all the combined sewer areas. That means where there are overflows when it rains into the Taylor Massey Creek in particular, across the top, it flows into the East Don, down the Don River, and then to the waterfront, all along the western waterfront as well, where we have raw sewage essentially, mixing with storm water, but going into our waterways. Is that a fair way to describe what happens, and that these, this is the infrastructure we're proposing to stop that?
That's correct. Wherever you see the one that's a combined sewer overflow, that is where we get a release of rainwater mixed with sewage into the environment.
Okay. And if we were to adopt the budget proposal that you put forward to us, and it's here, which is to make the rates be 5%, 6%, and then continue to be 5, 5, and 4, either one of these options, we could make the wet weather flow project be completed by 2028. Is that an accurate reflection of your briefing note?
That was your last question.
Through you, Madam Speaker, I wouldn't call it a proposal, I'd call it the briefing note. We were asked to provide options.
Yes.
And yes, I agree with you, option, the options that presented would provide the necessary financing, and then the ability for us to layer a couple of the projects, and we could then shave about seven years off of that total project.
Thank you. Counselor Layton?
I, I've removed my name.
Oh. Counselor Campbell?
I thought Counselor Layton was going to go, but...
He, he doesn't want to go.
Yeah, yeah, hang on a second, I've got what it was. Capital reserve budget for this year, for this upcoming year is going to be just under $1 billion, 919 million? Is that the fork? That's the, I'm looking at page nine of 19 on the report. Capital reserve fund balance projections, it's page nine of 19.
Yep, I'm just, I'm just going to that page.
I'll put your tongue on.
Yeah, it's about 850 million, just shy of 900 million.
Oh, that's 2017, and then it's going to rise to almost 800, $920 million next year.
That's correct.
What, how much are we spending this year on, on, on capital infrastructure?
The expected spend is about $800 million.
About 800 million. What's the most that we've ever spent on capital infrastructure for water?
Last year, we spent about 830 million.
So, so that's the most that we've ever spent, and yet going into the future, into, into 2020, 2021, you're expecting this, your, 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 your plan calls for us to be spending, you know, to the tune of a billion, two, a billion, three. Is that correct?
That's correct, and I can explain why we're confident we can do that. There are a number of very large projects, in fact, one out for tender right now, but there's a total of about five really large projects, that those five projects alone will generate cash commitment requirements of about $1.6 billion. And, and so those projects will be constructed over the next five-year time period. So we will see a, a, a jump in our capital program, and once those projects are completed, it will come back down.
Okay, but, but, but all of those very, very large projects have many subcontracts appended to them, don't they? So they, and they, I mean, they go, they go in series, so I'm, I'm calling into...
Through you, Madam Speaker, no, they do not.
They do not.
The five that I'm referencing
Right.
Are all large individual projects. There are a new Alt Fall at Ash Bridges Bay, ultraviolet disinfection facility at Ash Bridges Bay, an integrated pumping station at Ash Bridges Bay, the start of the Don Central Waterfront, which is the graphic you saw earlier, and, and then a high-rate treatment facility also to be constructed on a new water lot south of Ash Bridges Bay.
So with those projects, those projects are anticipated to be completed by what year?
All told, about 2023.
2023, all right. Okay, 20, so, so in 20, in 2021, we're still for, I mean, and these are, these are fairly rough estimates, I suppose. In 2021, we're forecasted to have almost 200 million in capital reserve, 2023 about 44 million, but that's if we spend 100% of all of the capital that's planned. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, no, we budget to spend 85%. So this is forecasted on an 85% spend rate.
Your fund balances are based on an 85%?
Completion rate, that's correct. That's the way we, we generate the financing model. So we do not ask for financing for 100% of the estimated capital cost, because we do know that projects are delayed and they lag behind, so it's only 85%.
Okay. That completes my questions, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Audgemary?
Through you, Speaker. Mr. DeGiorgiomo, are you in the habit of building splash pads with no water?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry, I don't build any splash pads. That is handled by our Parks Forestry and Recreation.
So is it a budgetary reason that my splash pad has no water?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So we'll have some water next year?
I will review it with the capital delivery team in Parks Forestry and Recreation, find out what the technical issues are.
Thank you.
Counselor Holliday?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Deep in the report are tables in there that talk about the basement flooding protection program. They will note that there's a couple of line items on Ward 3, and I suspect the general manager's familiar with some of the ones of concern in Ward 3. There are two lists. The first table alludes to projects which are approved and expected to be complete, I think, in 2018 or 2019, and then there are other ones that I forget the exact word, but are on track, and I wonder if the general manager or appropriate staff could comment on what the second table means as ones that are in development, and how certain they are to be delivered in, in the, the near future.
Through you, Madam Speaker, the five-year briefing note that we provide, so the certainty for the ones that are programmed for next year are quite high, because we're programming and asking for approval to proceed, as well as the one in 2019. We also then give you a list that show the three subsequent years combined to take us to a five-year project. For those projects, we are quite confident of proceeding with them, that we're recommending to go to a more detailed design level, to get better numbers. There are some instances, though, where some of those projects start to exceed the capital cost cap that we have for stormwater projects, and may have to be deferred. That does happen with some of those projects. They then get put on a subsequent list, which we track, and then we deal with it when we do state-of-good repair work. So, so there's really three lists. The two list is the five-year, the third list is the deferred items that do not meet that test.
The most important to me right here is basement flooding protection area nine, and I, if I recall, the, the magic number, I think, was 27,000 per benefiting household, which is tracking below our policy threshold level?
That's correct. The policy threshold level is 32,000 per benefiting household.
Okay, just, just a sec, Counselor Holliday.
Yes.
It's so noisy in here. Counselors, please? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Can you tell me, in terms of what the representation of the number in these lists, I think, of 27,000 is, is, how certain is that, that it's below the threshold, or is that subject to change?
Through you, Madam Speaker, if you're, if we're going to give odds, it's about 75% chance, because you're close to the 32,000, and this is when we get into the more detailed review, where there could be a chance if we find in-situ problems or problems with soils that, that can drive the cost up, it might put it over. But in many cases, it, it continues forward.
So to paraphrase, because I suspect I'll be asked about this by my constituents, is that the number that's published in the report is, to the best of your knowledge and the best of... the best of the information that you have, is where it's at right now?
That's correct. That's based on the environmental assessment and the estimates provided to us by the consultants, and we also have input based on our experience.
Okay, I also noted that there was a few exceptions on that list where numbers had exceeded the $32,000 threshold, and I wondered if you could elaborate on the exceptions process in those cases. Were they council motions, or were they other ways that you reached a determination on why you have to include them on the list?
Through you, Madam Speaker, they were always a, exceptions made by staff or technical reasons, and this is where we try to work with a project on a coordinated basis. So for example, if, if, if we're going to do some work on sanitary sewers, we will fund that from state-of-good repair programs. If we're dealing with stormwater ponds, we will fund that from wet weather flow capital projects. So the total project cost might be higher, but then we lower the calculation, because we were gonna do those projects anyhow, and that helps with proceeding with the total project.
Okay, I think the last question, and this is kind of the heart of the matter, obviously, councillors get criticism on the, the many years of very substantive increases to the water rates, you know, 7%, 5%, we're looking at 5% year over year. If council was to change those numbers to say something a little bit more lower, would you believe that there would be an impact on the basement flooding protection projects that are listed in here, and would that cause concern of either delay or making projects ineligible?
Yes, through you, Madam Speaker, if you lowered that number, in fact, we started at 25,000, and we were getting too many projects not making it through, so we raised it to 32. So the, the issue about proceeding, and we do look at it on an annual basis, and if, if council wanted to proceed with more projects, we'd have to raise that number to a higher level, 35 or a different number, in order to get more projects through. So that's why we look at it and say, because we would like to get on with more work as well, and if we felt that that was a barrier, we would bring a policy report, report forward to council and ask for you to consider to adjust that cap.
That was your last question.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis to speak.
Janet?
Counselor Davis to speak.
Wow, it's chaos here. So I have a motion to move, and I'm sure you got an idea of it when I asked my questions. Colleagues, we have a, a water budget that has, over the years, grown, but it has, on the wet weather flow side, fallen behind. And in the city of Toronto right now, we have one of the largest capital projects in Toronto's history, ready to go, and it is the wet weather flow project for the Don River and waterfront. The problem is that it is not going to get done until 3035. We received a briefing note from our Toronto Water General Manager that set out an alternative water rate increase in order for us to complete this work much quicker. It will ensure that we do not have raw sewage flowing into our waterways, polluting our beaches, and it would finally allow us to get off the list of an area of concern with the Great Lakes something agreement. What is it called? Okay, so I'm moving a motion to increase the rates to 5% instead of 3.2, and it will allow us to make a permanent and ongoing cleaning up of our beaches and our waterfront, and I hope you'll consider supporting it. I know that you care very much about the health of our waterways. Thank you.
Sir Layton to speak.
Speaker, I have a motion. It's Groundhog Day, folks, you've seen it before, you'll see it again, that City Council Direct effective Gen 1, that for the industrial water surcharge program that we charge for each parameter. If you missed the first six times I've introduced this, in quick recap, this is something that came from a recommendation from our Auditor General, from Lou, from the Ontario Water and Wastewater Association, as well as the Commissioner of the Environment for Ontario. What's, one, just one thing to illustrate why it's not fair, we have a multinational Molson releasing three parameters in, and a local Great Lakes Brewery releasing one parameter. Well, you know what? Molson's only paying for one parameter, and so is Great Lakes Brewery. So in a way, Molson and others aren't paying their fair share, and this works all the way up the line. It's 1.9 million that could be going in to doing other stuff in our agenda.
So we are, we are under three minutes, that's very good. Counselor Ager Mary.
Very quickly, I have a motion. And despite everything I've ever said about Mr. De Geronimo, he worked really well with me on this motion. Members, please take a minute to read my motion. It's about people who have dialysis in home.
Which is not too many people.
It's like a handful. The city of Ottawa adopted this program, and it helps people who have dialysis done in the home. Because they spend about $1,000 a ye, I'm, I'm hurrying, $1,000 a year extra on water that is needed to run the machines. Yes? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor Crawford.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. First of all, I want to thank staff, we seem to be, I wouldn't say rushing this, but this is a very important item, it's a huge budget in the city, so I want to thank the staff who did an incredible amount of work over the last couple of months, and of course, the Budget Committee for working with this, with this budget to, to get it to the point of where it is today. I'm, I'm not gonna speak a lot about the, the overall budget, but I do want to speak to the, the motion that Counselor Davis has just moved. I will not be supporting that for a number of reasons. Number one, here we are, quarter to eight, after an incredibly long day, and this motion is just thrown down. I didn't know about it myself, nobody knew about this to raise the rates, so in that, I can't support the fact that she's just throwing this at us like this with no... Counselor Davis, I am speaking, thank you very much. So I'm not gonna support it on that alone, but also, I will not be supporting it, because we have been working incredibly hard over the last number of years, lots of investments, billions of dollars investments into our water program. We've had nine over 9% increases, we had a couple of years of eight, we are now at 5%, and we're working away from five down to three, and there's a huge amount of money that we've been spending. And to, to go to our, our residents and to say, oh, by the way, after all those increases over all those years, we're gonna tack on another couple percent for the next four or five years, I'm sorry, I can't do that, and I will not do that for the sake of the residents of this city. And so I will not be supporting Counselor Davis's motion at all. Counselor Ager Mary, I will be supporting, I think it's a great idea, we spoke with Lou De Geronimo, and it's, it's a very doable thing to do, so I will be supporting that, and again, thanking everybody, but again, Counselor Davis, motion, this time of night throwing something like that at us, I'm sorry, I can't support it.
Counselor Cressy.
I, I'm happy to call to question, just to finish. I don't know what happened.
Well, what happened, your name was there and it's off, and I have Counselor Campbell.
I, I, I don't know what happened.
No, no, I understand, but I just don't know what happened to his name, his name was there. Okay, the question has been called, recorded vote.
Counselor Pasternak, please, Counselor Shiner, when you're seated, please.
Counselor Bylaw, Counselor Thompson, there's a motion to call the question? Okay, so can we put the motion, nobody, we don't have the motions. Okay, first motion is by Counselor Davis, recorded vote. Counselor Bylaw?
Counselor Perutzia, Counselor DiGiorgio, please.
The motion does not carry, the vote is 16 to 24.
Okay, our next motion is by Counselor Layton, recorded vote.
The motion does not carry, the vote is a tie of 20 for each side.
Motion's on the screen. On favor?
Yep.
Counselor Mahavik, please, Counselor Croissanti, Counselor Cole.
Counselor Wong-Tam, please, Counselor Layton, Counselor Carriganis.
The item is amended, carries 37 to 3.
Yes, Counselor Fletcher. Of these three budgets, I am holding the parking authority. I'm very prepared to let that go, I've talked to Mr. Kurepeski, I've had all my questions answered, and if no one else says something, that could be a quick item to dispense with that.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? The parking authority?
Yeah.
Okay, so on page four, EX 2920, Counselor Fletcher's releasing, on favor?
Counselor Perutzia, please, Counselor DiGiorgio, Counselor Wong-Tam, Counselor Layton, Counselor Matlow, and Counselor Carriganis, please.
The item is adopted, 37 to 3.
Okay, our next item is on page four, we can start it anyway for questions. EX 2919, 2018, rate-supported budget for solid waste services. Counselor Palacio held it down, but he's not here, so do we have questions to staff? No, but actually, Counselor Palacio wanted to release it today, and everybody said, no, no, no. So he didn't have a problem, huh? So do we have any questions? Counselor Layton?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, just a couple of questions. We know through, this is to the General Manager of Solid Waste Management, we have, there is a third organics facility on the horizon for Toronto, why?
At some point, we're gonna be generating more organic material than what we have capacity to manage. We're managing, we are right now, we're managing that through private contractors, but we, at some point, will need to identify what our longer-term options are.
So we already have more organic waste than we can process?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, we do.
Now, is it true that there's also a shortage, shortage of organic wa, waste processing in Ontario?
Based on the procurements that we've been doing lately, that is our experience, the province indicates that there is sufficient capacity.
So we're, we're seeing cost, costs escalate because of lack of capacity, is that fair, fair to say?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we haven't seen that yet, but there was a new organics framework released a couple of weeks ago by the province that includes an organics ban in the province in the future. If something like that goes into place, there will be a much greater demand for that capacity.
So wouldn't you say that us getting more capacity to both address the city's capacity needs, but perhaps also sell some of that capacity to other municipalities or private haulers, that that would, would be a good thing?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, potentially, that's something that we'll need to review, and, and the third AD report that was addressed through this council meeting, actually, outlined that we need to look at a number of this, those different options.
So right now, the third organics processing facility is in the capital budget starting in 2027.
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, it's just outside the 10-year forecast.
Just outside the 10-year forecast, but these things could take a couple of years to get going, there could be a couple of years of delays.
The last one we built is the Disco Organics Processing Facility, and that was around nine years.
Nine years to build, but we're not planning to start financing this until 2027.
Through you, Madam Speaker, we are looking at the planning process and have already started into a planning process to establish this. It's outside of our 10-year capital, we will have to bring it inside through the next process, depending on the results. We may, this may be a situation where it's a publicly-owned facility, or it might be a privately-owned facility that we sign a long-term waste supply agreement with, those are the different types of auctions we're gonna have to explore over the next year.
So you're planning on advancing this within the capital budget?
We're planning on, once we know, or have greater clarity on which the preferred option would be for the city long-term, we will bring that back forward through committee and council, and then also incorporate it into the long-term capital budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we have just five more minutes, so Counselor Holliday? Yeah, so why don't we?
I'm fine. Want to do the bills?
Let's just do the bills, yeah. Okay, let's just do the bills. Point of privilege, Counselor McMahon.
Can I move to extend, to finish this item?
No.
Point of order. Point of, uh, order, I was gonna say something about...
Counselor McMahon wants to move that we finish the item? Recorded vote. Everybody voted against the three minutes.
That's a recorded vote.
Yes, let's have a recorded vote. Counselor McMahon moved that we finish this item. Look at all the names. Everybody's putting their names on.
Counselor Matlow, when you're seated, please.
Counselor...
The motion does not carry. The vote is seventeen to twenty-two.
Counselor, Counsel Ford, you have a motion to introduce the confirming bill.
Yes, Madam Speaker, that leave be granted to introduce a bill to confirm to the point of the introduction of this motion, the proceeding to City Council Meeting Thirty-Five on December fifth, sixth, and seventh, two thousand and seventeen.
Shall Lee be granted to introduce this bill?
Counsel Kelly, Counsel Karajanis, Counsel Carroll, Counsel Thompson, please. Counsel Perutzis, Counsel Wong-Tam. Counsel Davis, Counsel Matlow, Counsel Lee, please.
Counsel Cole, please.
The motion to introduce the confirming bill carries unanimously forty in favor.
Shall this bill be passed and declared as a bylaw?
Counsel Perutzis, Counsel McMahon, Counsel Wong-Tam, Counsel Leighton, Counsel Karajanis, thank you. Counsel Thompson, please.
Counsel Cole, Counsel Fragadakis, Counsel Mahavik, please.
Counsel Shan, please, and Counsel Matlow.
The motion to enact the confirming bylaw carries thirty-nine to one.
Yes, Counsel Insi.
I just very quickly want to acknowledge that Counselor Michael Ford's the third Ford. I've been sitting beside here as the City Councilor, and he's the first of the three that's gotten two unanimous votes in City Council in one day.
Okay, member, okay, members, I, I want to thank staff and members of council. We're recessed to nine-thirty tomorrow.